Good afternoon and welcome to the September 9, 2020 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence a call of our calendar, a copy which can be found on the town's website. This is a virtual hearing pursuant to 20217 of executive order that you can participate and join in by utilizing the address www.brookhavenny.gov/join or by utilizing the virtual hearing link found on the Board of Zoning Appeals page of the town's website. Applications before the board will consist of three parts. The presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and then finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant, limited to those issues brought on by persons speaking in opposition. As a conclusion of each of the applications, this board will take one of three actions. We can decide the application by motion to grant or to deny the relief requested. Alternatively, we can close the public hearing and place a matter on our decision calendar. Finally, we could hold a public hearing open to a future date. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to grant the application, what this means is at least in part, the relief that you seek from this board has been granted. A grand letter will issue from the Board of Appeals Office within seven to 10 business days. That grant letter will be sent directly to the applicant. That is a document that you return to the Building Department with to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to close the public hearing and place a matter on decision calendar, what this means is your public hearing was held today and the record is now closed for decision. The board has under the code 62 days in which to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, the applicant will be notified directly. Those interested in viewing a decision, viewing the decision or learning or obtaining a copy of it can do so by accessing and off of the town's website under the agenda and calendar links for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Once that decision has been filed with the town clerk. Finally, if the motion that you hear is a motion to hold the public hearing open to future date, this occurs when either an applicant has not met conditions precedent to the relief requested, or maybe more commonly where the board requires additional information before we can decide the application. In this instance, the public hearing record is held open to a future date. On that future date, the required information is made part of the record and then the matter closed for decision. I want to remind all of you that when joining and/or participating in this meeting, you must name yourself with your name and the application number that you have interest in. As you can tell, we have a number of cases on our calendar today. You must indicate the case number for us to determine which application to bring you up to participate in the hearing. So please do so. And I thank you for your attention. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as this world. Good afternoon again. Welcome to the September 9, 2020 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. May we have a roll call?
Board members, James Mazzarella.
President.
Charles Lazaru.
Present.
Rick Cunha.
Present.
Ronald Lindsay.
President.
Deputy Chair James Wisdom.
Present.
Chairman Paul DeChance.
President. As I see it, there were several motions from adjourning cases on today's calendar. In a moment, we will we will make the motions to adjourn the requested cases. If any of you are here and attempting to participate regarding one of the cases that are being adjourned, please use the chat and/or Q and A section of the program and we will provide you with the information that we have.
Case number nine, Yocasta Prozo, October 7. Case number 11 IPA Asset Management LLC, October 7. Cases 45 through 46 of July 15, 2020, Werner and Lorenzo, October 7. And number 12 of August 12, 2020, Joseph and Linda Panico, October 7.
Does the board have that motion? Motion and second amendment made all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. I will note for the record that I see a number of you in the chat section advising us which case you are here to participate in. Please also rename yourself with that case number for ease of identifying where we should place you during the hearing. Thank you. We're going to commence this meeting then with case number one.
Case number one, Andre Ordege, 19 Sharon Drive Quorum. Property is located on the east side of Sharon Drive, 202 feet south of Acadia Place Quorum. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing cellar entrance exceeding the five-foot permitted encroachment, 11.2 feet.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Mitch Brendel for the applicant.
Very good. Mr. Brendel, we could see you. If you can unmute yourself, we should be able to hear you then. Oh no, you did it and then it went back to mute. Let's try that again. Very good. You got it now. All right. Give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you.
I do.
Let's start with your name and address, please, and your affiliation to the application.
Good evening, Mitch Brendel, Integrity Expediting. I am agent for the applicant. My address is 1717 North Ocean Avenue, Suite F, Medford, New York, 11763.
Thank you, Mr. Brendel. Good to see you. It appears from the board that there's a cellar entrance at this parcel that requires variance relief. Tell us a little bit about it, please.
So for this cellar entrance, as far as the homeowner was concerned, the main detail about it is its preexistence to their purchase of the home in 2004. So there is a finished cellar which we are applying for the building permit for and as well as the cellar entrance, which was predates their ownership of the home in 2004. It's 11.2 foot encroachment off of the house. Instead of the five feet, it would leave a nine-foot side yard setback off of the house and it would require some minor reconstruction to make sure that the rise and run is accurate to code. But other than that, reconstructing the entire staircase in a different format would incur a significant cost for the homeowner.
Thank you, Mr. Brendel. Questions from the board?
The chairman.
Mr. Mazzarella.
How are you, Mr. Brendel?
Good. How about yourself?
Very, very good. So this is your prototypical concrete walk down?
Yeah.
I imagine built with drainage down the bottom when you reach. And my question, I guess, is why? You know, why the length? Is it because it's it's less of a decline or how did it end up to be 11.2 protruding out?
There, what it appears to be is that there was the risers, the rise and the run are not equal on this staircase. And there wouldn't need to be. Well, in order to meet the three-foot landing and get up to a six-foot three height from the bottom up to grade, that would be the size. I don't know if you had gotten to see the plans at all, but to to make enough space for the landing on the bottom of the staircase and reach a grade, that would be within the current 11.2, there would have to be some minor reconstruction of the actual risers themselves, but.
Yes, I guess my only concern would be, and you're saying that this, the the depth, I guess, on the steps themselves are unequal at this point?
That is correct.
And so what what type of mitigation is going to happen at this point?
If granted by the board, there would be some minor demolition of a few of the grades that they would all be made to be equal to 10-inch 10-inch, 10 by 7, 7 high and 10 deep.
Okay, I understand. And I guess that whatever code there is as far as railings and whatnot, that'll be taken care of.
That is correct. A guard rail would be placed on the side. Handrail would be placed accordingly and sufficient space for the landing and dry well.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzarella. Is there anything further from the board? Do we have any persons wishing to speak or do we have any written comment on the application?
Mr. Chair, I have no speakers as of this moment.
Thank you. If there's nothing further than unless the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to grant the application as submitted type two.
Motion is by Mr. Mazzarella, second by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, I'm going to abstain. I only heard part of it.
The record will reflect that Mr. Burkin abstained. The motion carries six in favor with one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, board.
Case number two authored Dantonio, 8 Summerfield Drive, Holsville. Properties located on the east side of Summerfield Drive, 107 feet north of Lavender Lane, Holsville. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for existing shed.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Joe Walker for the applicant.
Thank you.
Hello.
Yes, Mr. Walker, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Let me ask you to give your attention, please, to the board's attorney to be sworn.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good, sir. Let's start with your name and address and your affiliation to the application, please.
Joseph Walker, 270 Ron Concoman Avenue, Ron Concoman, New York, 11779, agent for the owner.
Thank you. The board sees that you're here for relief concerning an existing shed at the parcel. What would you like to tell us?
We secured a permit for the roofed over patio and upon presentation of the information to the Building Department to secure the CO, it was pointed out that the shed was non-compliant. And so we wanted to seek a variance for the shed and with the ultimate goal of securing a CO for the roofed over patio and the shed. We feel that the shed is consistent with other things that are in the neighborhood. The degree of relaxation isn't significant. The shed is being used for shed type items, which I provided pictures to show. No one's living there or anything of that nature. And the owner did indicate that when the shed was installed, he thought that he had installed it to be compliant with the town regulations. So we hope that the board would look at the application favorably. If you'd like to make a stipulation that upon the demise of the shed, if there was, if it was ever to be replaced, that we would make it compliant at that point.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
How long has this shed been sitting there?
The shed has been there at least for a couple of years that I know of. It's, I think it's there for two or three years. I can't give you an exact date on that.
And are there any other sheds in the neighborhood that is similar in size and also with the side backs?
You know, that's a very good question. It is a private gated neighborhood. So when you go in there, you sign in and the people are a little sensitive, let's say, given today's circumstances about someone going on their property and you know, taking pictures or that kind of thing. So I think there are other sheds in the neighborhood. I can't give you exact addresses because I was not able to go on somebody's property and actually ascertain it in person. Take a picture.
So it's not an eyesore and it conforms to the neighborhood?
Oh, no, it's not a nice one. You could see I submitted photographs, four by sixes, as well as I emailed the secretary Lori this morning with some photographs. You can, the shed is well maintained and there's just shed type items in there. And the homeowner is very meticulous about the property. You could see from some of the pictures and it's.
Jimmy, I'm holding the picture up.
That's the picture.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see it. All right. So that's not intrusive. Then how high is that? You know?
Yeah, I could.
Have there been any complaints from the neighbors or anything like that?
No, no complaints. There's been no one. We sent out the notices. The homeowner knows the neighbors and no one has offered any, you know, ideas or rejection or.
And all the sheds in the neighborhood?
Yes.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the from the board?
Chairman, a motion to grant the application type two.
All right, there's a motion on the table to grant the application as a type two action by Mr. Wisdom. Before I ask for a second, do we have any other persons wishing to communicate here?
Yeah, I I do.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lazaru, yes.
Yes, um, there is no indication unless I fell asleep. The distances from the the shed, is that what I read as four foot seven north and 11.75 feet west?
Correct.
Those are the distances from? No other questions?
I am, and sorry, Mr. Lazaru, I hesitated there because I think I saw 6.9 west.
Yes.
And 4.7 north. The 11.75 was the dimension of the the frame shed. So just so the board is aware, it's almost 6.9 west and 4.7 north. If there's nothing further on the application, we do have an outstanding motion to grant as a type two action. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, motion made in seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Case number three, Patrick and Robin McCarron, 7 Ashland Street, Mount Sinai, located on the east side of Ashland Street, 420 feet south of Mount Sinai, Quorum Road, Mount Sinai. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool, side yard variance for proposed detached garage to be located in the required side yards.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vega.
I have Diane Moje for the applicant. I also have the applicant, Robin McCarron.
All right. Thank you. The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha's recused on the application. Mr. Vega, let's bring up Ms. Moje initially. She is here. Ms. Moje, can we can see you? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. We can hear you. Let's start with by having you sworn by the town board attorney.
Yes.
All right. So I, do I have the McCarrons on because I hear background talking? I don't have the McCarrons on. Ms. Moje, apparently your, oh, your clients are here. Did you wish, did you wish, were they participating or are we here to?
I think if there's any questions that I can't answer, they're there to, you know, enhance that. You know, unless they have something that they'd like to add.
All right, before you start, let me just, is it Robin McCarron? Is that who is with us? Can you hear us? Very good. Were you here just to view or did you want to participate with your representative? All right. So what I'm going to ask you to do is just put yourself on mute because with the background noise coming from you will be difficult to maintain. Very good. So Ms. Moje, you've been sworn. Let's start with your your name, address and affiliation to the application.
Diane Moje, DNI, Dating Services with offices located at 779 Horse Block Garden Farmingville for the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. McCarron. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're before the board today. Subject premises having approximately 125 feet of frontage by 97.5 feet in depth. We're seeking permission to construct a proposed in-ground swimming pool that would sit approximately six feet from the side and rear property line. And in addition to that, the applicants have sought permission to construct a detached frame garage that would be 20 by 20, that would sit in the side yard, wouldn't be no higher than 14 feet and would have a side yard setback equivalent to the pool of six feet. As you can see, there is a certificate of occupancy for the house. There is no garage in this house. When they were told that they would need a variance for their pool, they wanted to use the opportunity to pursue a detached frame garage in addition to the in-ground swimming pool. In viewing the aerial, you'll see that the area is comprised of a lot of lots similar in size. Some are much smaller. There are homes that have been added on to and have added attached garages. There are many pools in the area. As a matter of fact, diagonally across the street from the subject premises is a pool located in the side yard. Anywhere that we would be to put a pool or detached garage on this property essentially would require variance and relief from this board. I would suggest that the granting of this variance would not create any detriment to the surrounding area nor would it impair the values thereof. I think it would in fact conform. And I would just point out that using your aerial lot number four and number eight, both have pools that sit close to the rear and side property line, similarly placed as the subject premises, as well as 14, number eight. And that's just in the immediate area. So if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to try and address them at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Moje. So the relief requested is for two structures and they are both proposed here.
Yes, they are both proposed. Unusual, I know, but.
When it comes to the detached garage, you, the applicant does not seek relief either for square footage or for height because as you're proposing, it's at 14 feet height and 400 square feet with 600 would be permitted. So the only reason for relief here is that the detached garage is being placed not in, not behind the foundation of the house, but rather to the, in the side yard. So that the relief is side yard relief for an otherwise conforming detached garage.
Absolutely. And as you'll notice also on the survey, that there's an oil tank in the AC unit is located on that side of the house. So that would prevent us from scooching it any closer to increase that side yard.
All right. In terms of the pool, we do see where the pool is located. It's the paver patio to the rear of this house that dictate the location of the pool and therefore at least one of the requests for relief. And I did look at the aerial when Mr. Vega brought it up. It did show us some a tight rear yard on one of the pools. I think it was across the street at number eight. I don't see, I don't see number four.
Inside, number four is right where.
Oh, I see where the fourth, do you know, do you know?
Scroll down, number eight is also very tight and that goes across the back of the house.
And in terms of, in terms of those two pools at four Hawthorne and eight Ashland, I see that they're inside yards and rear yards with limited setbacks. Did your office determine whether or not any of those pools exist pursuant to board action? No problem. In this instance, I do see the paver patio location and as a result, the six-foot side yard is dictated there. But in terms of the rear yard setback at six, you're still holding what you may be showing us as 17 feet to the house and it is off to the side of the paver patio. That rear yard setback, did you talk to the applicant about any willingness to move it further away from the rear yard?
I would, if they are present, I think that they can answer that. I would think that there's might be a little bit of room unless there's something that would prohibit it at this point.
All right, certainly I see at least any foot setback. But if you'd like to bring them on, Ms. McCarron, you've unmuted yourself. So I think that you must have something to say. I'm going to have you first sworn by our board attorney, John Doyle. So if you could raise your right hand, please.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I didn't hear you. Was that, was that I do? Okay. And your name and address, please.
Robin McCarron, 7 Ashland Street in Mount Sinai.
All right. Are you holding that camera yourself?
Yes.
All right. It seems to be going up and down. I wondered. What would, thank you for coming for us. So let's, what would you like to say or add to this discussion about where your pool is proposed to be?
I mean, I really have no discussion. You know, just, it's like a lagoon type thing. So it's just going to wrap around.
Yes.
You know?
In looking at it wrapping around, I thought that it might also still meet your needs if it had a larger rear yard setback. Do you have anything that you want the board to understand in that regard?
I don't, you know, I'm not understanding. I don't know. Maybe Diane would be able to help.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just want to suggest that Mrs. McCarron, if we, if we increase the rear yard by two feet, then that would reduce the distance from the corner of the house to the pool at 15 feet. And it would still essentially be in the same area that you wanted. There would be a two-foot difference. I would suggest that it's a minor change and it would increase the rear yard and be helpful to your application.
Okay. Diane, you would know better than me, I, you know.
So we'll amend our application to make it an eight-foot rear yard setback.
We asked for six, we're correct.
Yes.
They want eight now. Okay, okay.
Thank you, Ms. McCarron. Does the board have that motion?
Don't move.
Motion second have been made all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Moje, was there anything further?
No, that would be it unless there's any other questions that I can answer for you.
Thank you. Is there any other communication on this application, either by live panelist or written communication?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
Um, I had somebody named CP who raised their hand. I'm not sure if they wanted to speak, but I in the chat, I've requested if they wanted to speak on this. I don't know if you want me to promote to ask.
Why don't you promote and then we will ask this directly?
I just received on the chat, it was an error. So.
Okay, I saw that also. Very good. Then if there's nothing further on this application, unless the board for a motion.
Type two.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru to grant the application as amended for an eight-foot rear yard type two action. Motion by Mr. Lazaru, second by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Case number four, Grace Poffenbarger, PG Builders, Inc., 4949 Expressway Drive North, Lake Ron Concoman. Property is located on the east side of Horse Block Road, 100 feet south of Ruland Avenue, Farmingville. Applicant requests lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback and rear yard variances for proposed one-family dwelling.
So Chair, I have a Michael Moore below, without applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. We will wait for Mr. Moore below to be promoted. There you are. Good to see you, Michael. Let's get started with having you sworn.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you.
I do.
Very good. Then we'll start with your appearance and your connection to the application, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Michael Moore-Billow. I am an architect and representative of the applicant Grace Poffenbarger. My firm is Inspire Design Group. My office is located at 1650 Sycamore Avenue in Bohemia, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Moore-Billow. As you are aware, the board's planner, Christopher Reed, reviewed this application. We have him here. We'll have him sworn and give his testimony now.
Chris, ready?
Ready.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Property is located on the north side of Horse Block Road, 100 feet east of Ruland Lane in Hamwha, Farmingville. The applicant is proposing to erect a two-story dwelling on the 9,986 square foot parcel with access to the lot intended via Horse Block Road. It is noted that the board previously heard an application to develop the lot in 2017, which was approved. Leoni, case number 30 of June 7, 2017. And the board may wish to incorporate the minutes from the prior hearing. However, the board only heard a front yard setback variance with the prior application. However, the board only heard a front yard setback variance with the prior application in that the parcel was determined to be single and separate. The proposed home in two thousand seventeen was sixty feet by thirty feet. A one-story home with twenty-foot side yards and a thirty-five-foot rear yard. And the proposed home with the subject application is now a two-story home with both conforming minimum and total side yards of twenty-nine feet and fifty-eight feet respectively. As per sequel, the application is a type two action and should the board look favorably on the application once again, standard residential mitigation is recommended.
All right then, Mr. Moore-Billow, those are the comments and live testimony of the board's planner. What comment did you have for the board?
Just, you know, to add in there that we are looking, I think it was Mr. Reed had stated, we are reducing some of the previous requests that were granted. My, the applicant did not pursue a single and separate search. One sense to, you know, since the ownership went directly from the previous owner, so they didn't see a need to go and prepare another single and separate report. So those factors, I think, still stay in effect. And I think on the surface, the requests are non-substantial and certainly we will not be having any impact on the neighborhood. So if the, the board has any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Good afternoon, Mr. Moore-Billow. How are you?
Good. How are you?
So I'm trying to figure out why on the previous application, you didn't have to go for a rear yard or a, or side yards. I'm assuming that because it was single and separate, it fell under the small lot ordinance and there were different setbacks set at that time.
That's, that's my understanding also, correct?
Okay.
Footprint is also, I think, was a little bit larger. So there, there may have been a circumstance where they needed to obtain, they had a sixty-foot by thirty-five-foot footprint hours is twenty-seven, approximately twenty-seven by forty-two. So I think that had some impact on, on the previous requests. And then certainly the single and separate eliminated some of those requests also.
I'm assuming so because under the previous application, you would have needed even more of a rear yard variance if that was the case because you're only proposing twenty-three here. Okay, now my second question is, are there other houses in the area that are two stories on similar-sized parcels?
Yes, yeah, there's actually a lot that is directly to the north and certainly the neighborhood is spotted. If you looked at the aerial photograph throughout with a mix of one- and two-story homes on similar-sized lots.
Okay, and the previous grant also, it was grant, it was a grant for a, for a one-story home. What was the square footage of that home?
My understanding was about, it was approximately the same area, about two thousand square feet. You know, the footprint measures about twenty-one hundred square feet, but I believe with some ins and outs on the house, it was irregular. So it was approximately the same size, however, just spread over a one-story area, which I feel has a greater impact than a more condensed two-story house, which preserves more open space.
I'm to understand then the proposed house is going to be approximately two thousand square feet or twenty-one hundred. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that with garage or is that?
Yeah, that's with the garage. The residence itself is about eighteen hundred square feet. And then there is an approximately two hundred and forty square foot attached garage.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you answering our questions today. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazaru.
Mr. Marbell. The style of the house, is this a split or two even? Okay. When I look at the, within the footprint of the building, you're entering at elevation one forty-five point three.
Yes.
The entrance elevation is one fifty-five?
The, I think that, I believe that that is a typographic error.
I believe it would be because this thing would be ten feet off the ground for the upper, upper level. So I think you might want to correct that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Sure, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaru. Is there anything further from the board? Is there any further communication other by panelist or, or written communication?
I have written communication.
We'll take that for the record now.
Okay, I have an email from Gloria Rochetta. I'm notifying the town of my objection to the proposed application for rear yard variance. Excuse me. The properties surrounding this parcel of land located at east side of Horse Block Road are much larger than point two eight of an acre. They all have significant front footage and significant rear footage. This includes the homes on Hetty's Path, Sherry Court and North Morris Avenue. This will drastically change the character of the neighborhood by putting a one-family dwelling on the smallest lot when all the other homes are in proportion to the surrounding lots. This is the only undeveloped piece of property on the block and building a home roughly the same size as the rest of the homes will change the character of the neighborhood. It is a very beautiful neighborhood because of the size of the land each home is situated on. This will completely be out of place. The property directly to the north of this proposed dwelling, my property, is several feet below the level of the proposed dwelling. Granting this relaxed rear setback will cause damage to our existing property by water runoff, erosion and dirt running downhill with construction right into our yard, as well as cesspool placement and drainage. Anything over, surely that will drain downhill as well. If the rear setback remains the required sixty feet, there is enough room for construction that hopefully damage will not occur. But granting additional footage and giving a larger setback than required to the rear will affect my property directly with water runoff, erosion and ground damage. Property taxes in this area are currently very high. Granting this rear variance will definitely have an adverse effect and impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood as well as all of the other properties enjoy their privacy with many trees, vegetation and sufficient space between neighbors. I fear that granting this variance will lower my property value in this neighborhood by building a structure that will not be in conformity with the rest of the neighborhood. While I appreciate the need and want for a builder to build a dwelling on any piece of property that is currently available, I ask the zoning board to please consider the fact that there is not too much undeveloped land left.
All right, for the record, I, I will note that my understanding that this is a residentially zoned B1 residence zone requiring a forty-foot rear yard, the application is for thirty-eight point six, meaning it's short a foot and a half, eighteen inches. Thirty-eight point six feet where forty feet is required.
Sixty feet is required.
Is it sixty feet? So is this an A1 residential zone?
No, it's B1.
It's a B1.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Yes, Mr. Cunha, just in, in a minute, I'd like to see the aerial again, just concerning the size of lots. Then, Mr. Cunha, go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Moore-Billow.
Yes.
On-site drainage, everything on-site is going into drywells. Is that correct, especially because it'll hit you a lot?
That's correct.
So you're catching front yard and also leaders and gutters. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're just building with the contour of the land is where the house is going. How much of the house is going to be exposed in the rear?
The, it's actually going to be, you know, maybe, maybe at most one to two feet, you know, depending on the grade. We have a, we generally have a relatively flat plateau around the house where it's going to be. I understand that the next block over Hetty's Path drops off. But from the front of the property to the, you know, where the garage entry level is, is one elevation one forty-five, there's about a three and a half foot drop, maybe close to four feet from where the garage, the front of the house is to the back property line where Ms. Rochetta's property is.
Correct, but you're going to maintain a two-foot all the way around the property, around the house itself. More, more so. Now, does this have a basement as well?
This house does, it does have a basement. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's what's giving you the ability to keep a two-foot of top of wall to the, to the road. Okay. So with erosion control practices in place, you, you will be able to hold all runoff from the neighbors?
That's correct.
Okay, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have the speaker on this case.
You can promote them.
I have a Joanne Nussbaum.
Thank you. While we're waiting, Mr. Moore-Billow, your survey does show us a difference in elevation, but as I see at the front of the house is at about one forty-four or one forty-four point five. And the rearmost, I think, goes down to one forty-two. That's about three, three and a half feet. Is that?
That's correct.
In elevation?
That's correct.
And the appears to be a dry well in the rear. What was the purpose of that?
The dry well in the rear is certainly to catch a couple of things. All of the solid surface and the roof runoff. And potentially, if there was any surface drainage, it would be directed towards that dry well.
In, in looking at the, in looking at the houses on either side of this parcel, the ones that are existing, they appear to be holding setbacks that are similar to what's requested or even more significant to the rear yard. Do you, did you get a chance to identify what those are and how they came to be?
We didn't get to determine if they were through zoning board application, but we did get, we did analyze them and see that they were similar setbacks as is evident in this aerial. So in, in so meeting the character of the neigh, of the neighborhood along Horse Block Road. Granted, Hetty's Path has larger lots, but if you continue along Horse Block and into South Coleman Road, there are lots of similar size with similar setbacks. So it is somewhat of a mixed neighborhood. Horse Block is somewhat of a main road also.
All right. All right. I see Ms. Nussbaum with us. Can you hear us, ma'am?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Let me just ask you to give your attention to, to the board's attorney, John Doyle, and he will have you sworn.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you.
I do.
Very good. Let's start with your name and address, please.
Joanne Nussbaum and I live at eighty Hetty's Path, Farmingville.
Very good. We see where you are, not immediately adjacent to the rear of the dwelling, but just one house over. You look to be Ms. Rochetta's neighbor. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Well, what additional comment did you have for the board?
My comment is that I feel it's not in keeping with the neighborhood and I, I understand it's to be a two-story dwelling. And just the concern that I've been living here a very long time and I just feel that it won't be in character with the neighborhood being that the trees are taken down and just encroaching on the habitat of everybody in the area.
All right. Thank you. For any further comment or questions from the board?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nussbaum. Is there anything further from the board with regard to this application?
Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
I know you brought up the, the actual drainage, but there's also a dry well in the front yard as well. That's connected to the back one. And Mr. Moore-Billow.
Yes.
Type of Horse Block Road, what section of Horse Block Road is this?
It's, you're, it's, it's just north of, I'm sorry, it's just, it's just south of Nichols Road where that bend is. If you were to zoom out, you'll see.
Oh, I know where it goes. Okay, it goes all the way down to the, to the racquetball club or whatever it was on.
Right, yeah, almost across from the university, you know, from Suffolk Community College also.
Yes, okay. All right. So it's a high-traffic road.
Horse Block Road is like a secondary road also that leads up towards Middle Country Road. So it does have a fair amount of traffic and then it also certainly runs down and connects in with the east-west portion of Horse Block Road, the county road.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? I'd first like to ask the board for a motion to incorporate the minutes of the two thousand seventeen proceedings regarding this parcel. Motion and second, all in favor, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Finally, is there a motion by the board on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha to close and hold. Second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number five, James Rocco, fifteen Miller Place, Yap Hank Road, Middle Island. Properties located on the east side of Miller Place, Yap Hank Road, one thousand fifty-nine feet south of Whiskey Road, Middle Island. Applicant requests height variance for three existing retaining walls located less than the required double distance from each other and varying in height from grade to four-foot high and one point nine feet high to three point eight foot high. Total height of seven point three feet high.
Mr. Chair, I have Kevin Gilfoyle for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Gilfoyle, are you with us yet? There you go. We can now see you, Mr. Gilfoyle. Can you hear us? Well, I don't have, I don't have any ability to hear yet. Kevin, did you try to unmute yourself? I think that's working now.
Okay, great.
All right. So there's some reverb there. Is there more than, he's, he's, he's actually on more than one computer?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So Kevin, do you have more than one computer?
I kept losing the internet connection here. I'm over in Rock Akuma. Optimum has not been great the past couple of weeks. In any event.
Let's, let's just have you sworn first and we'll take your appearance then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Mr. Gilfoyle, you, you've muted yourself. Is there, wait, can you see how, there you go. Can you, are you back? You, you actually came back and left again. Kevin, try to unmute yourself one more time for us. Kevin, you still in? Up.
Okay.
That's, that's good.
I'm having difficulty.
That's all.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin, Kevin, I'm not sure if we had you sworn yet, so let's just start there.
Okay.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you.
Yes, I do.
Very good. Let's just start with your appearance for the record and your affiliation to the application.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Gilfoyle of Wild and Wild Permits Services, eighty-six Center Street, Rock Concombre, New York, here for the honors.
Thank you, Ms. Gilfoyle. Good to see you. What would you like to tell us about this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here and originally my clients had hired me to secure a certificate of occupancy for an existing fireplace and a outside cellar entrance that should have been on the previous COs but weren't. And while we were speaking about it and had the inspection done for the CEUs, the inspector noticed that the existing retaining wall was not covered on any of the previous COs. Now, if we look at the survey, the in-ground pool was first CO'd back in nineteen seventy-seven and I have a survey to that effect showing the existing retaining wall, not the existing retaining wall, but a previously constructed retaining wall in that location. On or about two thousand seventeen, the previous owners had installed a, reinstalled a new retaining wall. And at that time, it was, the building department suggested I had to go back to planning as well as zoning for the overall height of this wall. The existing wall that was there served as a buttress for the in-ground pool because we had a naturally sloping ground towards the pond area. It backs up to a pond area. And back then, when it was built, the appropriate wetlands permits were taken out, but again, no mention of the retaining wall at that time. Since that time, we applied for the zoning board of appeals hearing, paid roughly about two thousand dollars in penalties on this. And I imagine because it's a tiered wall, it was three times the amount of penalties. But, Mr. Chairman, if you could maybe explain to me, the. But, Mr. Chairman, if you could maybe explain to me, the code as far as a retaining wall in the rear yard, I thought it was just total height, or is it?
Well, the, the code, as it pertains to retaining walls, has developed over recent years. And the latest version is under which you've been denied. So the walls require a certain distance from one another. And if they're not that certain required distance, they count them as one height. In this instance, they denied you, and I thought the, the language was interesting because I've never seen the language as it is here. And it was less than the required double distance from each other. So I'm going to look into that myself. But yes, the short answer is that the code has developed only in the last several years concerning relief variance, relief required for, and the required distances between retaining walls. And that's why you're here.
Okay. Okay. In, in summary, Mr. Chairman, the existing wall, well, the wall existed since 1977 and was replaced in the, pretty much the same exact area with newer materials. You know, photos, I think you have some photos to the record of the wall. It was well-constructed. And, you know, my theory is, is that, you know, the pool would never have been allowed to be built in that location without some kind of lateral support for that, that wall because it's roughly, I would say, a, more than a gradual slope to that rear property line.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments, board members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Lindsay.
Good afternoon. So when did you say the wall was built?
Um, I'm assuming the wall was built, and I assume that because I have a CO for a in-ground pool from Janu-, July 11th of 1977. That's when the story, it was built in a swimming pool, and Cabana were all issued.
Okay. And I don't think there was codes for that wall back then, were there?
I honestly, I wouldn't, I couldn't answer that, Mr. Lindsay. We're a little weak on retaining walls.
Oh, I just think that might be one of the reasons why it wasn't on there back then.
Could be. Could be.
And what is the distance between the two walls and a walkway? That is the walkway, correct?
Uh, no, there's no walkway there at all. No. It's, it's just a spacing there. It looks like it's probably about three feet, maybe, maybe a little less than three feet, 30 to 36 inches between the walls. It kind of looks like it.
Okay, now, without any pictures, it's hard for me to tell on this. It looks like it's attaching what I serve it. So if it's been that long, then did you say it was reconstructed again?
Yes, in, in 2017, I believe.
In 2017. Okay. And the inspector, I'm sure he looked at it.
Correct.
He was, now he's just making you come for a variance for it. He didn't give you any citations or anything? He didn't?
No, no.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board? All right. With regard to this application, I understand the board can see from the aerial that there is water within close proximity. The application is subject to chapter 81 of the code. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to grant the application type two as presented with subject to chapter 81 of the code.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Mr. Vega, yes?
It seems I have somebody jumping in late to want to speak on this.
All right. Well, why don't we hear what they have to say? Thank you. You can promote them. Mr. Gilfoyle, you should stay with us.
Okay.
We have a Tom Maltz.
I think we used to be able to promote much quicker through this Zoom platform.
You may want to speak on case 26 and might be confused in the chat.
I was watching, I was watching your chat discussion with Mr. Maltz.
Yes, I'm not looking to speak.
All right, Mr. Maltz. Well, thank you for coming up and letting us know that. Thank you, Mr. Vega, for, for ascertaining what the issue was. Again, we have a motion that carries, so thank you, Mr. Gilfoyle. We'll move on to case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Case number six, Danielle Gordon, 68 Birch Hill Road, Mount Sinai. Property is located on the west side of Birch Hill Road, 483 feet south of Hayward Avenue, Mount Sinai. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Moshe for the applicant, and I also have the applicant Danielle Gordon.
Let's bring Ms. Moshe up.
Mr. Chair, recuse.
I could reflect that Mr. Cunha's recused from the application.
I'm back.
Good to see you, Ms. Moshe. Again, we have your client also here. I've left them as a panelist, being able to hear the proceedings. And if you have any desire for us to bring the, the owner up for questions or whatever, just please let us know.
You got it.
All right. And I'll tell, I'll say, Mr. Vega, if you'd like to chat with the applicant, tell them that we're hearing from Ms. Moshe, and if they'd like to come up to speak to just to let you know. All right. So Ms. Moshe, you've been previously been sworn. We do see that this is a request for rear yard variance for a pool. What would you like to tell us?
Just for the record, Diane Moshe, DNIX Dating Services Offices 779 Horse Block Road in Farmingville. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the applicant is seeking a variant for an in-ground swimming pool, seeking only a rear yard variance of eight feet. Because of the location of the pool, they have requested this location due to the utilization of the yard and wanting to keep it close to the home. You know, with children being in the pool, wanting to be able to see them and, and et cetera. I have taken a look at the surrounding area, and as you can see by the aerials, the, the property at 43 Grassland Circle directly behind has an in-ground pool in close proximity to the rear property line, as well as 41 Grassland Circle. And there are several others, 56 Grassland Circle, 50, 64 Grassland Circle has also a tennis court and a pool in close proximity. So in viewing the aerial, this really would not be out of character with the surrounding area. I'm sorry, I was looking at the aerial behind my computer. And we would suggest that the, the depth of the property and the fact that the house is set so far back makes it difficult. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to try and address them at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Moshe. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazaru.
Ms. Moshe, how are you?
I'm well. I hope you're well as well.
I'm just doing ducky.
Oh, good. Good.
Considering the location of this, and of course, first thing clinging was to say, move the, suggest that you move the pool as you look at the site plan directly to the west and the open area. But I'm sure the reply would be they're trying to preserve some backyard space. Is that not right?
That is absolutely correct.
All right. And to say, give us a little bit more room between the, the pool and the rear yard would move it closer to the building. And I'm inclined to say that getting any closer to the building, being that it's a two-story dwelling.
Right. That, that would, that would put us at about eight feet from the dwelling. That would be a little bit tight. So in, in, you know, looking at it, you know, we could maybe pick up another foot if we, if we moved it a little bit west because of the skew of the house.
Well, the only thing I was going to say, if I can finish, was that you'd probably encroach on the structural integrity of the foundation of the building.
Right.
That, that I would say would be so. Other than that, I don't have any more, any further questions. Thank you. And I noticed from the aerial that was shown to us that there are many of these pools in the area.
Correct.
It, it's no further detriment or any detriment to the.
They all seem to be in the same location.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaru. Is there anything further from the board? All right, then, Ms. Moshe, if there's nothing further, I'll ask the board for a motion.
I would grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru to grant as presented. It's a type-two action. Seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone.
You too.
Case number 10, Glenn and Dara Maiola, care of Andrew Malguanera. Property is located on the northwest corner, Water Road and Tall Tree Lane, Rocky Point. Applicant requests rear yard variances for existing one-story residence addition and existing wood deck with outdoor kitchen. Also, side yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair.
To Vega, yes.
I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Malguanera, we can't see you. Can you hear us?
I can.
Very good. Let's start by getting you sworn.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Very good. Well, then, let's proceed with your appearance and presentation. Thank you.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent for the applicant. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The, what we have here is a couple of things. One, we'll start with the den on the property. It's been there for about eight years. My client bought the house five years ago, did not realize the den was not part of, was not legal. It already did extend, as you can see, a little bit, but that someone extended it a little further out, but never legalized it. So here we are. It falls in line with the characteristics of the neighborhood in Rocky Point. This is a large lot in Rocky Point, and it doesn't upset the nature of the area. As far as the pool goes, requesting a side yard of seven feet, you know, just a stick, you know, you know, that's the perfect spot of the property to put it. The wires overhead have been removed, been moved to the other side, so they're not a factor anymore. And again, it fits with the nature of the area. And if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So Andrew, the den is in, is the hatch, hatch?
Correct.
Marked area?
Correct. So it did, it did extend a little ways, and it was extended upon to make the den, you know. It was a little small for dent.
So it's, it's, it's holding almost 10 feet at this point?
Correct.
Okay. And that whole other area, 32 by 22, is the existing wood deck with the outdoor kitchen on?
Exactly right.
And you're looking for the same side yard with respect to that, I said?
Holding, holding the same side yard. And yeah, again, existing about eight years or so.
Okay. So we leave this with the pool, and the real issue there, I assume, is the, is the seven-foot side yard.
Correct.
So are there other pools with seven-foot side yards in the area? And, and wait, wait, I'm not done.
Sure.
Why can't we make it a little bit bigger than that?
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, of course, you know, I want to make the board happy. So if, you know, there are pools that are close to, you know, close to the property across the street, a 31. You got 22, you know, they're right there. I know seven foot is a little, a little tight. You know, I mean, if, if the board will be happy at eight, as, as shown, then, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight you too hard on that one.
Well, what is it, what is the current distance from the pool's edge to the walkway as currently exists over there?
Currently, can you pull up the survey again? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's through what, to the masonry walkway?
Yeah. And also, I noticed that it is a 22-foot-wide pool. It's a pretty wide pool.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, that's why, you know, we could, we could, we could give you the, you know, the eight feet if that will make the board
Happy. You're, you're gonna, you're gonna give us that?
Oh, I'll give it.
I just want to understand what, what's happening.
I don't mean like that. No. It's, I will, we will, we'd be willing to accept that if, if the board could be so kind to, to.
Well, all right. So let's just go back to the original question. Are there other pools with, let's say, an eight-foot side yard or approximately that in the area?
Yes. Across the street, the 31 and 31 definitely has within eight feet. 22 is about 10, but it's right there.
Okay. Has there been any input from any of the neighbors about the, specifically the neighbor to the, I guess that would be the west, right?
There's no neighbor on that side either. That was a factor in that.
I see now. Yes, I see. That's empty, empty, currently an empty lot.
Right. That's why, that's why we're, you know, kind of trying to scooch it to seven. There's no one there to be impacted by this in any way.
Well, there's an owner. The owner of the property didn't, hasn't objected, right? Is that right?
I have not been, I have not been given word of that.
Okay. All right. I have, I have, do you have, do you want to amend your application? Is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, I'll amend it for eight foot.
Does the board have that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Burksen.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So then, is there anything further, Mr. Malguanera, on your amended application, which seeks an eight-foot side yard for the in-proposed-in-ground pool?
That's perfect. Thank you.
If there's something further, and we have no one wishing to speak on the application, I'll ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to grant the application as amended type two.
Check.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 12, Reginald and Diana Richardson, 195 Avenue B, Rock Akuma, located on the east side of Avenue B, 325 feet north of Third Street, Rock Akuma. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing pool deck.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
Unmute.
I have Diana and Reginald Richardson.
Yes.
All right. I am hearing someone. Let's see if I could find. Let's see if, do you have your video on? I'm not, I don't see that I see you.
Okay. There we go. Is that it?
Oh, good afternoon, sir. How are you?
Good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon. I'm sorry. I'm a little, not really not good with.
Oh, trust, none of us, none of us are good with it. So you're, you're in the same boat as us. I'm going to ask you just to take a moment and give your attention to the board's attorney. We'll get you sworn.
Yes, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good. Then let's start with your name and address, please.
Reginald Richardson, 195 Avenue B, Rock Akuma, New York, 11779.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for attending today's Zoom meeting. So you, so you had a pool put in with a deck, and the pool has a nice required setback of 15 feet or more, but the deck didn't. Your, your deck is at 10 feet, and that's why you're here today. You, you understand that, right?
Yes, I do.
What did you want to tell us specifically about how the structure, how that structure came into being and how it compares to your neighborhood?
You know, I think it's, as far as comparing to the neighborhood, it's within, you know, it's means within a neighborhood. What I did learn, though, is to really, even the builder, the pool people company, make sure that the water was beyond the 15 feet. But it was a learning lesson to make sure that the actual builder of the deck was on board with that, which obviously he didn't, because I'm sitting in front of you now for this.
Obviously, he wasn't. That's right.
Yeah. So it was that in itself. Anything going forward, I know, I've been here only three years now. So I know going forward, I kind of put the cabbage before the horse in this instance, but, you know, now I know they'll go get the permit first and then, you know, go on with the building or whatever's getting done.
Thank you, sir. Let me see if the board has any questions.
Kevin?
Mr. Mazarella, yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Richardson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mazarella.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing well. How's it going?
Good. Very well. Thank you.
That's good.
So it looks like the, it's a, it's a basically a rounded deck coming around halfway to your, to your pool, which is also round. The, and forgive me, I don't see a dimension on the actual leg of the pool, of the deck. Does that say 2.1? Is that what, is that what that is? So those two sides that come around.
Yes, that come around to the side.
Yes.
I'm just trying to get my.
So just, I'm just trying to get the, the width of that, of the sides there. It looks like it comes around to just a couple of feet, 2.1 feet.
And I'm looking at that as 2.1 feet above grade.
Is it that NP you're referring to that I'm in, I'm questioning, I'm in question for? Is that the piece you're referring to? From my understanding, when I did speak to someone over in the town, they did say to me that it was like two feet. Something like that she did say.
All right. And but when it comes to the survey, and I apologize for interrupting, the pool setback is 15.5. The, the deck is showing us 10. The deck then is five feet in width, at least in that location.
Okay. Yes, I'm looking at the thing.
The 2.1 above grade. And so how deep is the pool?
Four, four feet.
Okay.
I just have it semi-in-ground.
It's a semi-in-ground. Okay.
Yes.
So some of that, some of that, so I understand. And the deck that's coming off the house is also is 2.7. So, so you step down onto that deck there?
Yes.
Around the pool. It's a, it's, it's a step down.
Yes. Yes, it is. When you step off to that first one, go through the fence, it's a step down. Yeah.
And that pool, and that whole, and that whole situation, both, both decks, even though they vary in height, they were built at the same time?
No, actually, the, the first one coming out of the door, out of the back door, was built prior to me purchasing the home.
All right. So the rest was attached when the pool was put in?
Yes.
Okay. And approximately, when was that?
Um, last, last fall.
Okay. It's about a year ago.
Yes.
All right. And that's material-wise, both the same. You said wood deck, wood deck. So it's, they're all, they're similar in nature, fairly, they match each other.
Yes, I actually had them stained and everything. I don't want stained, so they do completely match.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you for answering the questions, Mr. Richardson.
Not a problem. I hope I was of some help.
Yes, you are. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to grant the application as submitted type two.
Motion is by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, sir.
So I'm sorry. So that means I was granting up the permit?
Oh, no.
Oh.
Yes, that, that's what that means. The board considered the relief requested by, on your behalf. And we granted that requested relief. You will get a grant letter within seven to 10 business days that you take back to the building department with, with you. And then you can eventually apply for your final CO for the deck.
Okay. Thanks a lot, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it, board members.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do the same.
Case number 13, Peter and Mark Tochi and Colleen Myers, 400 Grove Avenue Patchogue, located on the west side of Grove Avenue, 523 feet north of Smith Street. Patchogue applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for proposed two-story and second-story residence additions.
Mr. Chair, I have the applicant, Colleen Myers, and then James Nicolazzi.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. All right. So Ms. Myers, I can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. And there is someone else that is being promoted. Did you hear Mr. Vega say that name, and do you recognize it?
I didn't hear it. It was reconnecting.
Okay.
Was it James Nicolazzi?
Yes, that's correct.
And all right, is, is that, is that one of the owners of the house, or is that someone that's going to address us on your?
He's addressing you.
All right. Well, it's very nice to meet you. Let's see if we can bring the other gentleman up.
Okay, it's, I was watching all the time. Was it not working?
All right. So, so I guess we can hear you, but you're not giving us video. Did you?
Yeah, it's saying the video was failing for this. I can go up the video later. Can you hear me?
We can certainly hear you loud and clear. But in terms of the video, are you having difficulty?
Yeah, it's saying failed to start video camera. For some reason, I'm saying start my video. Coles is asking it, but it's failing for some reason.
All right. Ms. Myers, you recognize that voice. Is that?
Correct, yes.
And and is it someone, is someone that you engaged on your behalf?
Yes, correct. He's our architect.
All right, sir. So why don't, I'm going to ask you, sir, and Ms. Myers, why don't we do the same, just to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
It's always where I tell the truth, the whole truth, enough about truth.
I do.
All right. Sir, we, we, we have no video of you, but for the record, you are here speaking on behalf of the applicant. Can we take your appearance, please, for the record?
My name is James Nicolazzi. I'm with Ark Street Architects. My address is 1550 Deer Park Avenue, Deer Park, New York.
And for the purposes of this hearing, you're the agent for the applicant?
Correct.
What would you like to tell us?
All right. My clients are looking to do a two-story addition off the rear of their existing home. The style of the house is a gable roof, gambrel roof, and we were trying to keep within the style of the house. As you can see, the site is askew, and also the house is slightly tilted, if you go back to the, the site plan. The current house right now is sitting back at 10.8. What we did is we took the same design of the house. I sent drawings to the, the board of the house. And we kept the same style of the house. We just kind of moved out towards the rear to give another bedroom and expand the kitchen. The bedroom's on the second floor. My clients have two children and have a third one on the way. And they're looking to expand the house, but keep the same character and nature of the house. The way the house, the plot of the site plan is, we would be here for the board anyway, even if I, for side yard setbacks and total yard setbacks. With respect to the side yard setbacks, there are three houses on Grove Street. One is 284 Grove Street, and the other is looks like 290 Grove Street. And then on the other side around the back is 276 Bay Avenue. They all have side yard setbacks of less than nine feet, which we're asking for. One of them, the Bay Avenue one, which is behind them, is only six feet. It is so, obviously, this is a slightly different type of property. It's, it's angled. And that's pretty much all we're, you know, we're looking to get the nine foot as opposed to 10 foot eight, because we're coming out through the exact width of the house, straight on back, approximately nine feet. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
All right. So so there's a concrete patio underneath that enclosed porch right, right now, or this is going to be an addition on top of that?
We're going to remove the concrete patio. Yeah, and do a real foundation, you know, footings, first floor, second floor.
So you're going to go out from the back of the house in that hash mark, that red hash mark portion of the back of the house?
Correct. That is the proposed first, two-story addition.
And there are houses in the neighborhood that match, well, it's, it's, it's not out of character to the neighborhood at all?
No, the neighborhood is unique. It has very different types of houses. So it's, it's within, you know, it's one of the older houses. It's built 100 years ago. So, yeah, it's in keeping with the neighborhood and the site.
And I'm looking at that on, on the Google Maps, and I could see that there are a lot of different style houses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a very unique neighborhood, from old houses to, you know, newer ranches and splanchers and all that.
Now, is the, it's Grove Avenue or the road that goes right down to the beach, to the bank?
Yep.
Okay. So it's not out of character at all? And there's, are there any, is there any pushback from the neighbors or anything like that?
The neighbor just north, which is 396, my client spoke to them. They were more than willing to come on and say that, but there was no pushback.
And there's no pushback from anybody?
No.
I have nothing further?
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? So let me just ask you, what type of space are we adding to this house? Is it bedrooms? Is it?
Bedroom upstairs. Yeah, that's the majority. We were adding, we're extending in the kitchen and opening up the floor plan on the first floor. But what we're doing is really gaining the space for the second floor to add a bedroom, to make a master bedroom for the, the parents, and then the kids' rooms upstairs.
So currently, then, the kitchen is at the rear wall of the house?
Correct.
And that's why the addition is there as opposed to, to the, to the south side?
Yeah. Well, the south side, yes. We didn't also want it, the south side is the dining room. Didn't want it to change the, the bay window in the dining room and keep it the same character as, as, as it's originally designed. I wanted to impact the house as less, change the design of the houses as least as possible.
And the, the, the design or the proposal, as you're showing it to us, encroaches a little bit further into that side yard, but you're going from 10.8 feet to nine feet. So it's a foot in many inches. Is that what it is? All right.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to grant the application type two.
Motion and second amendment made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and good luck, Ms. Myers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, board.
Case number 14, Joseph and Susan Navarro, 72 Ridgewood Avenue, Shirley, located south side of Ridgewood Avenue, 652 feet east of Blue Point Road, Selden. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing deck with tiki bar.
Mr. Chairman, I have Ralph Alsasser for the applicant, and I also have the applicant, Joan Navarro.
Thank you. Can we do what we did at the last application? Please advise the applicant that if they'd like to speak, just to raise their hands, and you could promote them, and we'll start with Mr. Alsasser.
Mr. Chairman, I'm getting sworn in first.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Alsasser. Just waiting to, for your video to begin, so we could see where you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, here you go. We, we, we can certainly see you and hear you now. Let's start by having you sworn.
It's always where I tell the truth, the whole truth, enough about truth, to help you.
I do.
Good to see you, Ralph. Let's start with your appearance for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Ralph Alsasser for the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Navarro.
Thank you. As you, as you heard, we do have the applicant
Yes.
as a, as a, I guess, a participant as an attendee. If and when you or, or the applicant would like to have the applicant speak, would just please let us know. What would you like to tell us about the application, though?
Mr. Chairman, this property here, when we met Mr. and Mrs. Navarro, they had a set of role that they basically had experiments on. So this, this deck was built about between two, three years. It's a ground-level deck on a side yard. And obviously, they didn't even feel they needed anything for it because it was so low. So, and then they put a little tiki bar on it, and there's no plumbing in it, and that's used basically seasonally for entertainment purposes. So when the, the brush between the properties, as far as the bushes, you can't even tell there's, there's anything there. So it's kind of secluded, and it's a nice tastefully done.
And in terms of the, just the size of the deck, it appears to be modest. Do you, do you?
Yes.
Do you know what the dimensions are? Because I don't see them on the survey.
Well, it's 10 by 14.
Is it 10 by 14? All right. And again, on grade with the, with the tiki bar on top. Ms. Riccardi showing us it now.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Mazarella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, visit aboard. Have a good evening.
Case number 15, Cheryl DeGroot, care of Andrew Malguanera, properties located on the north side of Phyllis Road, 98 feet east of Monroe Drive, Mastic Beach. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for existing one-story residence addition, height variance for existing six-foot-high fence located in the front yard on Phyllis Road.
Mr. Chairman, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Let's see where he chose. Oh, there he is. Let's unmute yourself, Mr. Malguanera, and you've been sworn, so we'll start just with your appearance for the record.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you. This is case number 15. You are here for minimum total side yard variance for the one-story addition and six-foot fence. What would you like to tell us specifically?
Okay, so as far as the addition goes, it's been there since 2004. It is a master bedroom of the dwelling. It fits in line with the characters of the neighborhood. There are a couple, there are houses on the block with similar side yards. Number 10 Phyllis, number five Phyllis, 19 Polk Road, very similar side yards. As far as the fence goes, you know, the, the fence company kind of, you know, angled it a little bit, for whatever reason. It's just slightly past the, the front foundation. No harm in the neighborhood, I don't feel. And if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Hey, Andy, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. I'm wondering, when was this built?
2004.
2004, okay. And you said it was being used as a bedroom, and it's only a one-story. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we have other houses you demonstrated or actually presented that there were some in the neighborhood, even next door, that were the same setback, if not smaller. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we're talking approximately less than a foot maybe on that angle on that fence?
Yeah, seven, seven inches to be exact.
Seven inches? Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazarus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 16, transformed homes by J and E LLC, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the west side of Auburn Avenue, 450 feet south of Colin Drive, Shirley. Applicant requests permission for existing half-story residence addition on a 50-foot lot.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Vega, was that Mr. Malguanera you said?
Correct.
Andrew, yes, you're still here. But I was just speaking off the record with, with Ms. Riccardi. I've never, not seen really for a half-story. I've always seen it in square footage, so we know exactly what we're considering and granting. But I now know it's 400 square feet. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, we did, we did state that to the building department. I don't know why they, they drew it up that way, but yeah.
All right. Apparently, it's not a square footage issue. I'm learning that from Ms. Riccardi, but I would like to have it stated for the record, and I'd like to be part of the decision. But, Ms. Malguanera, I didn't let you start with an appearance for the record, so let me start, let you start there.
Sure. Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent for the applicant.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
All right. So if you, if you pull up the ILC, see this, the whole block is, is 50-foot lots. Most, most of the houses have second story to some degree, not all, but most. For example, 463, 467 have the same type of house with the same second floor. 473 and 469 have full second stories on 50-foot lots. So it fits well in line with the characteristics of the neighborhood. My client purchased the house this way, and she's looking to legalize it and sell. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
So do you have any idea when that was put on?
I don't. It wasn't my, it wasn't, it, it, it wasn't, they didn't blow out the footprint. They just finished the second story, you know, so, but I don't know when it was done. It wasn't, you know, I'd be guessing if I told you.
So you're saying they bought it and then they finished it. It was already built?
They, they were. They, they were, yeah, I believe it was, I believe it was a rental that they're not selling.
That they're not selling?
Now they're, they're now selling, looking to sell. Yeah.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair. You say, you say it's a, goes along with the other houses in the neighborhood?
A hundred percent. There're both, there's two houses right next to each other that are same exact type. And there are other lots on the same block that are full-blown second stories on the same, on the same street. So it falls in line.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, you said it doesn't have a problem with the 400 square feet?
No, it, it, the relief is for a half-story residence addition on a 50-foot lot. So that's what the board has to consider.
Okay, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I had an attendee raise their hand. I'm not sure if they'd like to speak. I tried to engage them in the chat, but I don't see anything back.
Let's bring them up. Mr. Malguanera, were you expecting a visitor here?
Not that I was aware of, but it's welcome.
I have Noreen.
All right. I think I'm hearing some audio, but I don't see anyone yet.
No audio yet.
Mr. Chair, while we wait, can I ask Mr. Malguanera something?
Of course.
Andrew, is this basically a cape that they finished the second floor on?
That's right.
Okay, that's all.
Mr. Chair. I also have Andy Levine who raised their hand. I'm going to promote.
Okay, bring him on up. All right, I am hearing some audio. For those individuals that requested to be brought up, if you can make sure your video is on.
They are both on audio. It's one of the board members or Mr. Malguanera who you're hearing from.
Okay, so then, then Andy says I have no questions. Andy Levine, so is, is, you said the other individual was someone named Noreen?
That individual is not responding for me to unmute or start the video.
All right, then. In that instance, I'm going to ask the board if there's anything further on this application. If not, I'll take a motion.
Yes, I'd like to grant the application type two presented.
Is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 17, Stephen and Roseanne Bello, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the southeast corner of Division Street and Priscilla Avenue, Holtsfield. Applicant requests front yard setback from Division Street and rear yard variances for existing above-ground swimming pool and pool deck located in the front yard on Division Street, not permitted. Side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
All right then, Mr. Malguanera, this, you're still with us. You were previously been sworn. This survey reminds me of your survey from the last hearing where your shed was up in the corner there, but this time it's a pool. What, let's start with your appearance and let us know what you'd like to, about the application.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent for the applicant. What I have here is your famous corner lot situation where, you know, if this wasn't a corner lot, there'd be minimal issues. Except that, you know, town code, you know, doesn't permit in the secondary front yard. You know, our client, you know, obviously did not realize such. Pool's been there for about five years. It is holding a a 12-foot setback, has no, you know, impact on the, on the front yard of Division Street with vision. We did get, if you notice, the fence ever so slightly comes off the line. And we got highway permission to keep that on July 30th. The shed is, is, you know, standard shed for lawn equipment and whatnot. It is on a slab and is barely encroaching on the side yard, but it is. And we're asking permission if we could, if we could, please keep it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Malguanera, this is Charles Lazaru.
Mr. Lazaru.
When did you say the pool was constructed?
About five years ago.
Five years ago. And the wood deck under question is the one immediately south to that?
Correct.
Behind the pool?
Correct. And it's only, it's only five inches off the ground.
I see that, yes. And what is the size of it? It's 197 by 178?
Correct.
Okay. And then we have the shed which is in the rear yard, so to speak?
It's, yeah, it's, well, it's mostly in the rear, but ever so slightly encroaches on the side yard. So that's why we're, we're speaking about it.
Right, okay. What is the shed constructed of?
It's wood frame.
Wood frame. Does it have a foundation?
It has a slab, I believe.
It has a what?
Slab.
Slab, I see. And when was that installed?
I don't have the exact date. I would say within the last handful of years, but I don't, I don't have the exact date on the shed.
Any other pools in this area have, are located in the front yard or the secondary front yard?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's the problem. You have a corner lots. I mean, there's not, not everyone has the same situation. Lot, you know, houses aren't set up the same as in across the street, 19, set up in a way you wouldn't have the situation. Ours is set up where you would. There's not a direct correlation. There are some houses with similar setbacks, you know, that are, that are close, like 4 Michel and 2 Farm Court around, around the block are similar in, in setback-wise, but not in front yard. I mean, it's just our uniqueness of our lot that is why we're here.
Yeah. Tell me, you may know or may not know the answer to this question. Any reason why that pool wasn't located to the south of the property?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, I, I it just basic, you know, not everyone knows, you know, when you put up above-ground pools, a lot of people, a lot of people call my office and don't realize you even need a permit for above-ground pool. You know, and don't realize, just, just, you know, kind of one living, you learn kind of things.
Any restrictions in there? Like, is a cesspool there or?
I, I don't want to guess and tell you that. I mean, it, it, you know, this, for whatever reason, was the optimal spot to put it for their purposes. And again, it's been there for five years. There's been no impact on the, on the, on the neighborhood, I don't feel.
No neighbors, no neighbors jumping up and down about it?
No one's called my office complaining on this one, so.
Okay, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaru. Is there anything further from the board in the application? Does the board have a motion?
Grant the application type two. Second.
Motion by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Lazaru, seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Case number 18, James and Loretta Girardi, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the southeast corner, Wood Path and Tall Tree Lane, Rocky Point. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing deck. Height variance for existing six-foot-high fence located in the front yard, Tall Tree Lane.
Mr. Chair, we have Andrew Malguanera, again.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera. I see that you're still here. Another one on Tall Tree Lane.
Yes.
Goodness, what you were doing over there. Start with, start with your, your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
All right. And we have a fence and a deck to deal with here. What would you like to tell us?
Correct. Fence, fence has been there according to my client longer than I've been around since 1980. He's fixed it up in numerous, you know, you know, he's fixed it up in numerous times, but that fence has been there since 1980, according to my client. The deck is on the ground level. It's just not holding the required setback. And we are asking permission to keep it. Neither have impact on the neighborhood in any way. If the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So Andrew, the, the fence is setback from the property line, how parallel to Tall Tree? Approximately how many feet do you know?
It is six feet.
Okay, a few more feet. I don't think you would have needed to apply. Is that right?
Not, not in this instance, because Tall Trees technically are, are actual front yards. So regardless.
Oh, all right, okay.
So, yeah, we had to.
All right. And the other portion of the fence runs on the property line to the, I guess that's pretty much to the south. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, but technically it's a front yard, I see.
Exactly right.
All right. Now, the deck is on grade level, you said, but it runs, a portion of it runs around that one shed over towards the property?
Yes, exactly right, exactly right.
And that's the portion that's creating the issue in terms of the?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. And it, it's just slightly above grade at that point?
It's ground level, I believe. I don't even think it's higher than eight inches. It wouldn't need a permit if it was holding setbacks, but it's not.
Okay, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Malguanera, is there a permission for the second curb cut for this house? It looks like you have a driveway off of both Wood Path and Tall Tree.
Right, that's, that's going to be on our agenda of things to do down the road, but yes, we will be addressing that.
All right. Ms. Riccardi has something to add here.
Yeah, on the denial from the building department, it says highway approval required for second driveway. So he will have to get that in order to get the permit.
Is there anything further from the board? If not, a loss for a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the application as submitted type two.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 19, Adrian Faccini, care of Wood Hall Expediting, 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the west side of Shenandoah Boulevard, 860 feet north of Canal Road, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing outside cellar entrance exceeding the five-foot permitted encroachment, six feet.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Ms. DeVito, we can see you can hear us.
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. Let me please have you give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Thomas, we're to tell the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth.
We do.
Very good. We'll start with your appearance, please.
Amy DeVito, Wood Hall Expediting, with offices at 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York.
Very good. We have an outside entrance here requiring relief. What would you like to tell us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. So the permissible encroachment for the cellar entrance is five feet. This cellar entrance width actually is five feet, but the way it was built, it juts out about a foot from the house. I'll show you a picture where you could see how it juts out from the house. And this is what's creating the encroachment into the rear yard setback. The cellar entrance has existed, at least since 2001 and prior to my client's ownership. And we're here today to legalize it as part of legalization of the finished basement over at the premises. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, before I give it to the board for questions, I will tell you that there, the town portal indicates to us an age, age violations concerning an illegal apartment at the dwelling. They remain open. The reference for the record violation is V is in Victor 061635. I do note that it's from 2010. And basically, it's described as illegal apartment and non-owner occupied. So I would like you to just take note of that violation number, Ms. DeVito. You'll have to clear that violation and subject to any decision from this board.
Yes, thank you. We're aware of the violation. As soon as we have the permit, we will be removing the apartment accordingly as far as the kitchen and just legalizing the basement, just as it been a basement, which will be free-flowing to the main part of the home.
All right. Certainly, you don't need a permit to go down there and remove it, a kitchen, if it wasn't there with permission. But that being said, let me ask the board, are there any questions on the merits of the application?
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mazarella.
Hi, Amy, how are you?
I'm Mr. Mazarella. Good, how about you?
Very well. So I missed what you just said at the end there. So, so the the apartment itself is being dismantled and it's just going to be used as part of the house at this point?
That's correct. And we have to make some other adjustments to the basement, which is why they're waiting until we have the permit to take care of the removal of the kitchen at that time.
So then it will remain owner-occupied or is it still a rental or?
Actually, the home is for sale.
It's for sale. Okay, so they are trying to, I guess, get their housekeeping done so that they can actually get it up and have a, have a sale.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. And so as far as the basement encroachment, we're here because the required five feet is is exceeded by a foot, correct?
That's correct.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to grant the application as submitted type two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Hi.
I'm sorry. I apologize. That motion was by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, that motion was made subject to the resolution of violation V 061635.
Case number 20, Joseph and Lisa A. Quinta, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the south side of Campus Drive, 218 feet west of Tudor Court, East Atalket. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard. Permission for existing 672-square-foot detached garage, not built in conformance with permit number 04B20783.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Melgud, are you back with us?
I am.
Very good. Again, you previously been sworn. Let's take your appearance for the record.
713, oh, sorry. Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Very good. You are here for variance relief concerning a shed in the side yard and a detached garage, I think. What would you like to tell us?
All right, so the shed, I'll start with the, the, the plastic shed. It's a seven-by-seven plastic shed just used for lawn equipment. It's just best in that spot for the access from the house and whatnot. Minimal in size and has no impact on the neighborhood. As far as the garage goes, it's not a tremendous garage, only, you know, not even 700 square feet. The reason we're here is because you want to add to the back of it and basically did like a built-in shed built into the garage. And had with, with, by doing that, made the garage over the required square footage. It really has no impact on neighborhood whatsoever. It's, again, not, not greatly over square footage. The height is fine. And, you know, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Wisdom, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Very good.
So so this is an existing shed?
There's an existing, there's a small seven-by-seven shed. Yeah, that, that's.
How long has it been there?
About three years, I believe.
Okay, and is it? How high is it?
Under 10, nine feet.
Any or old sheds in the area?
Yes.
And it's not out of conformity with the area?
Not in any way.
From what I can see, or what I was able to see for a second here. There are, are there many sheds in the area?
Uh, I mean, there's definitely sheds in the area, you know, to what degree, but this, I mean, I'm, this is probably one of the smaller ones.
Yeah, this is a, it's a plastic shed.
Exactly right, exactly right.
And what's, what's kept it, well, one, you know, one.
Standard, yeah.
The regular standard stuff going on in the neighborhood.
Exactly right, exactly right.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Was there anything further from the board? Andrew, with regard to the garage, when the relief is for not built in conformance with a permit, was that for the extra 72 square feet of, of the area? All right, thank you. If there's nothing further from the board, a loss for a motion.
I have some.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have Ms. Riccardi.
I have an email from Harold Flockhart of 12 Campus Drive. I am opposed to the approval as shed placement makes it impossible to replace the fence and the detached garage is way too big for the neighborhood. And that's it.
All right, and Mr. Malguanera, I you're free to reply to the comment that we just got. All right, and Mr. Malgonera, you're free to reply to the comment that we just got.
I mean, again, if you look at the, the size of the lot, it's, it's a large lot and I don't feel it, it does not, I feel it conforms with the neighborhood.
All right, again, for the record, the height of the garage is fourteen foot.
Correct.
Where the code requires fourteen, provides a maximum minus fourteen feet, so it meets code there. It's six hundred and seventy-two square feet with a good permit six hundred, so you're seventy-two square feet over the code permission, and that's the relief request for that, in that it holds the required setback, as I understand it, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, is there anything further from the board? Tell us why you think the neighborhood temperament that the plastic shed inhibits the replacement of a fence.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. I would be guessing. That's, that's the first one I've heard of that. You know, I'm sure, I'm sure you could replace the fence if that shed, you know, it needed to be moved in order to do so, but I think that's not much of an issue.
Is, is the survey correct in, when it's indicating that the shed holds a setback of greater than four feet from the property line?
Correct, right, which would, yes. Which falls in line with, with the size of the sheds, just in the side yard opposed to the rear.
All right. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to grant the application type two.
Motion is to grant type two by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Noreen now raising her hand for, for, I believe, the past case.
Why don't we bring Noreen up? Maybe she'll come up this time when we can talk with her. Before I have Mr. Cardy read the call of the next case. Anthony, when, when Noreen was sitting as an attendee, she identified with a case number.
She is not. She just popped up now.
So are we waiting for this individual to be promoted up? Anyone sitting on that, sitting in the as an attendee, please identify yourself with a case number that will, as you can see, assist us in bring you to the hearing that you have most interest in, in speaking on or participating in, will also not cause any delays.
Noreen, we can see you.
Wonderful.
All right, Noreen, yes. I can see you also, and we can also hear you. Please, I have, I've stopped calling cases because I still can't identify which case you have interest in.
Number twenty-one, the one you're on now.
All right, the one that we, oh, it's case number twenty-one, the one we're on now. Okay, so I'm going to have Mr., I'm going to have Mr. Vega then demote you back to an attendee. We're going to hear from the applicant's representative first. And then once the applicant's representative have spoke, has spoken, we will bring you up to speak on the application. Do you understand that?
Thank you very much.
And you are, you are someone wishing to speak on the application. You're not one of the, you know, the applicant herself, correct?
Mr. Chair, I, I put her back down to an attendee.
Very good. All right, thank you. You can bring up the applicant or the applicant's representative here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cardy.
Why don't we have the call of the Kelly Redd first?
Case number twenty-one, Roland Sabat, one ten dash fifty-six. Sixty-seventh Road, Forest Hills, properties located on the west side of Grand Avenue. Eight hundred and fifty feet north of Dawn Drive Shirley. Applicant requests lot area, lot frontage, and minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one-family dwelling.
All right, and we see the chat from Ms. Linger, who's interested in coming up as owner. Mr. Vega, who else? Was that the individual you were gonna tell me who's coming up?
Oh, I have Larry Davis for the applicant.
All right, so. Why don't we promote Mr. Davis and Ms. Linger, and then I think that I see Mr. Davis is with us already.
Mr. Chair, I recuse.
We can confirm that Ms. Linger is here to to, as a participant or as someone that wants to watch the proceedings. And I'm still behind. Mr. Cunha is recusing the application and the record should reflect, so. So I have Lily Linger with us and I have counsel for the applicant Larry Davis with us. Mr. Davis, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I was gonna ask you for your appearance, but you're, you're, you're on top of that. Go ahead.
For change, Larry Davis, one seventy-five Oak Street, Patchup, New York, for the applicant. Good afternoon, Mr. Members of the Board.
Good afternoon. Ms. Linger.
Yes.
Good to see you. I have been, I've been watching your progression through the chat feature of the program. I'm happy that we get to see you. You have Mr. Davis here to speak on the application. Are you here to participate? Or did you initially just want to view the proceedings to see whether you want, or you want to participate?
Well, my father, who's eighty-nine, is waiting eagerly to see what the results of this proceeding is.
So I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave you there. If there comes a times that Mr., if there comes a time that Mr. Davis would like you to speak, or you'd like you to speak yourself, just let us know. And we'll swear you in, let you proceed that way.
Thank you.
But in terms of the application, Mr. Davis, you've given us your appearance. I'd like to, to go right into the testimony of Mr. Reed. As the board knows and as everyone else interested in the application should know, the board's planner, Christopher Reed reviewed the application and provided the board with certain findings, recommendation, recommendations. Mr. Reed is here. He's been sworn and will take his testimony to begin.
Subject parcels located on the west side of Grand Avenue, eight hundred and fifty feet north of Dawn Drive in the Hamlet of Shirley. And the applicant proposes to erect a two-story dwelling on the thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-six square foot parcel with access intended via Grand Avenue. And the property is located in the A-one residence district, requiring a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. And the lot does not conform to the A-one lot area requirement. In nineteen eighty-eight and eighty-nine, the town board, on the town board's own motion, rezoned large areas of the town to increase the lot area needed for residential dwellings to protect groundwater and surface water quality, as well as to limit the burden on public facilities and infrastructure. The applicant apparently acquired the subject parcel in two thousand and twelve. There are a total of forty-one improved residential lots within the five hundred foot radius. Seventeen percent or seven lots have both area and frontage conformance with the application. And the endeavor does not appear to conform to the surrounding development pattern. Of the seven lots enjoying conformance, staff found none which were approved by board action or constructed with the underlying A-one residence zoning in place. Further, staff notes the parcels not single and separate in that there was a merger of this lot and the one to the north, lot thirty-six point two, back in nineteen eighty-seven. In terms of a potential precedent for other such zoning board actions within the five hundred foot radius, staff finds only one adjacent to the subject parcel to the west and depicted on the radius map as lot nine. In terms of dwelling size, while the endeavor does not conform to either the minimum or total side yard requirement of the A-one residence district, the dwelling does conform to the recommended side yards of the small lot ordinance in section eighty-five eighty-three of Town Code for sixty-foot wide lots, which is twelve feet and twenty-five feet respectively. As per sequel, the application is a type-two action, and should the board look favorably, standard residential mitigation is recommended.
All right, Mr. Davis, before we get to you, I just want to note for the record that the chat activity is pretty brisk on this application. I want to sure, to assure everyone wishing to speak that you will have that opportunity. We see that you're there. We're going to start with applicant's representative, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to note at the, after reading Mr. Reed's reporting, going through it, that he, he notes that this lot doesn't conform to the A-one lot area requirement. There's not one lot within this entire neighborhood that conforms to the A-one requirement. In fact, most of these homes in this area was developed under C and D zoning, and it was abzonked to B up until nineteen eighty-eight or eighty-nine when it went to A. Even when it was B zoning, there was only a fifteen thousand square foot requirement. This lot is thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-six square feet and is eighty-eight percent in conformance with the B zoning at that time. In addition, this lot also maintains a sixty-one percent frontage. Frontage at that time required a hundred foot frontage. This one would be in sixty-one percent conformance to that. Mr. Reed is correct in his conformance report that there were seventeen percent of the lots within the area that do conform to this lot. But what, the, the most important thing about this lot, Mr. Chairman, is how it was created. This lot was part of number two oh three Grand Avenue, the property directly to the north up until nineteen eighty-seven, as Mr. Reed pointed out. In nineteen eighty-eight, the town of Brookhaven issued a certificate of zoning compliance number six one three seven on April twenty-fifth nineteen eighty-eight, thereby creating as de facto the lot that we have in question here today. This lot was created as a result of Town and Brookhaven action, and therefore we should be able to build it in accordance with what we are applying for today. Mr. Reed is also correct, and the forty-two lots that are within our radius map, or forty-four, I should say, one is owned by the town of Brookhaven, that's the airport directly across the street. There's a vacant lot directly behind us, and in between houses two eleven and two nineteen is a vacant half acre lot. Other than that, the entire area has been developed. One thing I would like to note is that when I posted the sign, I could not help but see how much debris was on that property, grass clippings and cut trees and all of those things that are resulting from the neighbors. Character in the neighborhood is the vacant lot that sits amongst all these very nice houses. Another nice house here would prevent all of the dumping that is being done to that lot right now. And this is one of those situations where Mr. Reed is establishing a neighborhood based on a five hundred foot radius. This, this neighborhood evolves much further than five hundred feet. In fact, it's map of Shirley, Long Island, Unit I. And if you go outside the radius map, there were a bunch of fifty-foot, fifty-foot lots. There's another sixty-foot lot over on Oak Avenue. There are many other houses that have been created as a result of the Shirley, Long Island maps. So this lot is not out of conformance with the neighborhood and in, in essence should be built as a result of it. The one, the one other thing I want the board to note is, in Mr. Reed's report, he notes that the owner took title back in two thousand and twelve. This was actually a transfer from his son to the father. The son bought this property in nineteen ninety-two and has owned it in, in, the, the family has owned it continuously from that time until today. There are no other means that we have to get the relief requested that we are asking for today. This is not a self-created hardship. This hardship was created by the town of Brookhaven granting lot two oh three a CO for the existing house. I cannot achieve my relief in any other way than asking this board for relief. The lot and the house do conform to the general character of the neighborhood. The house is going to be approximately sixteen hundred to seventeen hundred square feet with a one-car attached garage. If the board has any questions, at this time I'd be happy to answer them, and then I will address whatever comments neighbors may have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. As, as we normally do, we, we compare requests for relief such as this for development both to the existing resident, residence zoning, which is A-one in this instance, and to the existing development in the, in the particular neighborhood. So I know that you mentioned it should be built because it, it conforms to everything that was required under D at the time that it first came into existence, or or whatever it is that you said, but that's not actually what we do. We, we compare to both the current zoning classification and what's on the ground to determine whether or not there's, it compares favorably to the, to the character of the neighborhood. So we can both agree that it doesn't, it doesn't conform to the current zoning A-one classification. Our next step is to look to, to what power compares to the existing neighborhood. You've agreed with Mr. Reed that there's seventeen percent conformity both to lot frontage and lot area was, was significantly, though, of that, of those of the houses that make that seventeen percent, which is, which is, which are seven of them, seven lots developed that, that, that are considered conforming, making it that seventeen percent. None of them were developed under the A-one classification and none exists pursuant to board action. That's, that, that is an issue with regard to this application. Because the board needs some basis upon which to consider an application such as this.
And Mr. Chairman, I must interrupt for a minute. There is not a precedent that would be set here by granting this lot. There's only one other lot in the entire area that needs to be developed. And again, I must remind you that none of these houses conform to the A-one zoning classification as it sits today.
I wouldn't expect that they do because the whole area was abzonked. That's why we look at both the current zoning classification and then what currently exists on the ground. We don't, we don't measure against the fact that one or none of the, the parcels were, are developed in accordance with the A-one zoning classification or whether, what, whatever the current zoning classification is. Because parcels have been abzonked and their tax maps were, were created a very long time ago, in the fifties or whenever, whenever it was. We do keep referring to lot number nine. I see it as a merged lot with number five in common ownership, and certainly there's precedent. This would create precedent for the development of that lot through a land division.
However, Mr. Chairman, as you and I both well know, a land division is a completely different application than a lot, than, than for a single lot, and we've had that discussion many times over the years.
Yes, we have, yes. In terms of this lot, it appears as though it was merged at some time with radius number ten, which appears to have been developed in this, in the early seventies. I do know that this lot was lost as a result of a tax, tax arrears, and it was purchased by the applicant's son in, in the eighties from the County of Suffolk through a tax sale.
However, Mr. Chairman, I'm not so sure that tax lot ten was built in the seventies, as I have a certificate of zoning compliance, which, which was issued April twenty-fifth nineteen eighty-eight, indicates that house was built prior to nineteen fifty-nine.
I'd be happy to accept a copy of that from you and make it part of the record. In my, in, in our investigation of this and through town, through, through town records, it appears as though that the, there, the, the house at radius number ten was constructed in seventy-four. It wouldn't have gotten a CEU, but you're saying it has a certificate of zoning compliance?
Yes, it does. I'm looking at it right now as a matter of fact.
Could you just read the number of that for the record?
It's number six one three seven, dated April twenty-fifth nineteen eighty-eight. In addition, in nineteen ninety-five, April fourth nineteen ninety-five, certificate of occupancy number one seven 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 five one was issued for a second-story residence addition, twenty-four point two five by twenty-six point two with a bathroom. Again, Mr. Chairman, the town created this lot and the issuance of this certificate of occupancy thereby almost splitting this property.
I like, I do, I don't, I do like that argument. It appears as though, though, that merger existed prior. And the fact that one tax lot, the taxes were not paid for on one tax lot doesn't make them two separate lots.
However, this certificate of zoning compliance was issued after they had already been taken by the county and was issued by itself. This, this was issued in nineteen eighty-eight, that the properties were held together until nineteen eighty-seven. The mere fact that the, that the town of Brookhaven issued this certificate after the fact indicates that that's a legal split off of this parcel, which would indicate that this is a legal parcel, and it should be single and separate from the time back that this certificate was issued. And I should not be before this board right now because it has sufficient frontage to be able to be granted.
The logical extension of that was, would be that the, what you're saying is that the, the the developed parcel at radius number ten should not have received any certificate of compliance or certificate for any addition to the house, because it, because it lost half of the parcel through a tax sale.
Well, Mr. Chairman, but they, the, the town issued this, and by issuing this, it almost acts as a grant of a land division. And thereby, if it's, if it was, if it is, acts as a land division, it, you, you only need go back to a single and separate from the date of the land division for two years from the date of that land division, which this property is. It, it sits as single and separate since nineteen eighty-seven. Before then, they were merged. It was lost for a tax sale. It was purchased by my client's son in nineteen ninety-two. And this, this is a, a situation that is different from just a sixty-foot lot in, in, that has seventeen A situation that is different from just a sixty foot lot in in that has seventeen percent frontage. Conformity with the rest of the neighborhood. This is a lot that was created as part of a land division. I don't, I don't care if the board did it or not. The town created this land division and we should be able to.
You're saying a land, you're saying a land division was created because one of the tax lots of two was lost to a tax sale.
No, because.
Well, no, it no, it doesn't start there, it goes back, it goes back prior.
But that's not the reason I say.
So a new, a new way, a new way to perform or create a land division is by. By 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 letting half one of your tax lots be lost in a tax sale and then repurchasing it because then you have two lots.
No, Mr. Chairman.
But I mean logically, if that's the logical next step of the argument, though.
But no, no, I don't agree with that. The the logical next step of that argument was the town legalized after that lot was lost in the tax sale. They legalized that fifty foot lot at a time when it was by itself, when the other part of it had been had been lost. By legalizing that, they legalized my lot.
But by by taking what action?
By giving a certificate of zoning compliance.
For what?
After that lot had been spun off.
For what?
In the fact, in the fact.
No, Larry, don't for what? Because I want, I want you to be specific for the record. You're saying that they legalize that lot through the issuance of a certificate of compliance, but I'm asking for what, for what structure?
For the house. It's for a one family, one story, twenty-four by twenty-six residence with a cellar entrance. That's what they legalized.
And when, when was that issued?
April twenty-fifth nineteen eighty-eight.
All right, again, again, I'm going to hold the record open for that document you've referenced it as six, one, three, seven of nineteen eighty-eight.
Yes.
You've also referenced the certificate for an addition to that dwelling.
That is correct for a second story that was issued in nineteen ninety-five.
And if you could just do us a favor and provide a copy of that also, I'd be happy to make it part of the record.
I'll email it to Mr. Cardy after this hearing this afternoon.
All right. Thank you. Um, let's hear what the speakers have to say on the application that's okay with you.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Vega, you can bring anyone wishing to speak up, please.
Mr. Chair, I have Solomon Frasier. I have Sherry and Norine.
All right, so. I'm waiting for all three of you to be promoted. Norine, we are beginning to see you. And. Norine, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Ms. Langer is requesting to speak also. I think that you're all being promoted, though.
Ms. Langer just needs to unmute herself. She was a promoter.
I'm unmuted now.
We can hear you, Ms. Langer, I'm looking for the video. I see Ms. Langer. I see. Norine, you have to unmute yourself.
I did.
Oh, now you did up, and you just put yourself back on. So I heard I did, and then you went back on mute. Oh, you're off now, don't do anything else, you're good.
I didn't touch it last time.
Now that's good.
I'm on an iPad and I'm not computer literate.
Well, you're doing very good right now.
I'm driving my poor neighbor out of her mind trying to help me.
Don't worry, nor in just to remain right there, don't touch anything else. Mr. Vega, who else are we waiting for other than Norine?
Solomon Frager. You should be able to hear him. I've asked to start the video and Sherry. And you should be able to hear her, and I've asked to start the video.
All right, so Solomon Frager, Mr. Frager, we now see you, and I believe that we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. I just wanted to join in with.
All right, let me just ask you to stop there for a moment. I'm looking for the last person that we, are we not going to get video?
Her mic is on, she should be able to hear us, and we should be able to hear her. I have asked to start the video, she has not.
All right, and her name again is?
Sherry.
Sherry, can you hear us? Sherry. We're requesting that you start your video and your audio, if possible. It indicates that your audio may be on, we're waiting to see if you can hear us. All right, that's then hope that Sherry comes up, but Norine, you're back on mute. Norina and Mr. Frager, I'm going to ask you both, please, to give your attention to the board's attorney. John Doyle, who will swear you with.
I'm the spirit, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth will help you.
I do.
Yes.
Very good. Norine, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Norine Castellano, I live at one ninety-nine Grand Avenue, Shirley, and I've lived in this neighborhood since nineteen sixty-nine.
One ninety-nine Grand Avenue.
Right next to the property they want to build on.
Uh, number. So just bear with us a moment.
Certainly.
Number seven, all right, so board members, radius number seven, which is the. The lot immediate to the. West, I guess. Ms. Castellano, what would you like to tell us?
I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine, and this is the second time I'm fighting. Years ago, it was a group that originally owned the house and the husband died, life hated it out here. So they decided just to leave it as it was, with no part of the area. A speculator came in and bought the house for a song, there were holes everywhere. Curtain, but it's the rest, he bought it for a quick sale. Didn't care about the lot, it's only forty foot wide. I don't see how you can build a house with the forty foot wide lot. You'd have to build it sideways and to build a two-story. It it would be on top of everybody.
All right, just so the record is clear, I can tell you that I'm looking at a survey showing me the lot is. Mr. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at sixty-one. By by two seventeen. So similar in size to the lots to the east of it. But Ms. Castellano, I did hear those comments. I didn't, some of your testimony, I wasn't able to hear all of. You mentioned you would, this is the second time you've been dealing with this. Are you, are you familiar with someone else who attempted to develop this this lot?
Yeah, when he bought the house, he owned all the property, the lot next door to me and the house. The husband died, the wife didn't like it out here, so they just left it. A speculator came in and decided there was holes in the wall, they were raccoons, it was a mess. So he just slapped it together surfacely to sell it quickly, which he did. Then all of a sudden, some lady came along and decided she wanted to try and build, and we all came down, we fought it. It was denied.
Where did you, where did you come down to fight it?
Brookhaven Town.
And where was Town Hall when that happened?
That was in Patchogue, Patchogue, one twelve.
The one on one twelve. Do you remember at the time, the name of the applicant, the name of the applicant?
No, I do know that a week or so after they denied it, they sent me a letter and the neighbor on the other side, he asked us if we wanted to buy the lot. Because they couldn't do anything with it.
Are you certain then that that a. Decision was rendered by whatever body heard the application?
Yes, they they said it was an illegal lot. And they denied the application, so she knew she couldn't do anything with it, so she tried to sell it to either me or the neighbor on the other side.
All right, all right.
And the second time I'm doing this, and to build a two-story house yet, they'd be on top of me.
All right, then, Ms. Castellano, thank you very much for your patience of waiting and waiting to be heard on this application. You're welcome to remain where you are to listen to the balance of the hearing. Mr. Frager, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, please. And so we just, let's start with your name and address.
So my name is Solomon Frager, and I just wanted to say I'd join in with Lily Langer and Mr. Larry Davis. I'm not a resident of the area. I'm a family member, I'm well interested in the hearing, so I I just, I don't want, I don't have anything to say related to the area, but I want to join in with your application. And just, just if I could say some equitable principles, I think Mr. Davis outlined the specifics and and the technicalities. But. My my mother-in-law's father is an eighty-nine-year-old man who was recently hospitalized. Who's been carrying this lot for many, many years, as been discussed in this hearing. He has paid taxes on the lot. He's had the outlay expenses to upkeep the lot. He is an individual who's, as Mr. Davis said, has no other relief but to petition the board right now for relief. If his relief is denied, it would not be beneficial to the neighborhood. Because the lot would remain vacant, where as Mr. Davis outlined, it will continue to become a dumping ground. It will continue to have maybe unscrupulous people using it as an area to be in the neighborhood. And a place to do possibly illegal things. So what we're proposing to do would be a major benefit to the entire neighborhood. Would take a lot that's in just less desolate and and conform it to the neighborhood and make it. Possibly a family that can be part of this neighborhood. So that's just the equitable principles I wanted to put forward for the board to to hear and to possibly consider.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Vega, is there anyone else that you have wishing to speak?
I still have Sherry.
Have we, have we attempted to?
Her audio is on now.
Oh. Yes, I hear someone new.
Hi there.
All right, just bear with us, we're waiting for your audio to come up, I'm sorry, your video to come up.
She has to start her video.
Sherry, is is there something on your screen that you see that says start video?
Yes, I pushed that, but it says that. Which went down, so I can't really recall, but it said something is obstructing it, but I pushed it again, so.
All right.
You wanted to shoot that video to me again, request?
Sure, we can, Mr. Vega, can we do that? We apparently we just did it, do you want to try it again?
I I hit it again.
This one. All right. You can still hear us, though, correct?
Yes.
I'm just going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, I'm going to have you sworn.
So I'm the spirit, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth.
Yes.
All right, and again, for the record, we are unable to. Obtain your video so that we can hear you only through audio, and the record should reflect that. That can I have your name and address, please?
My name is Sherry Locaccio. And I reside at one ninety-five Grand Avenue in Shirley, New York, one, one, nine, six, seven.
All right, bear with us one moment. One ninety-five Grand Avenue, the the radius map indicates Sherry Warner, W A R N E R, as the owner, is is that you?
Yes, it is, I recently married.
All right, and that's radius number four for the board, which we see now is to the second lot west of the subject. And Ms. Warner or Ms. Locaccio, what would you like to add to this conversation?
Well, first, I I'm sorry to hear about the father and and I hope everything is okay with him. My concerns are some in part in what you were talking about, about when a property is. You know, somebody stops paying taxes or whatever, and it's split, and then they can reclaim it and then, you know. Build or whatever, I I have real concerns about that. You know, because that kind of sets in motion for others to do the same. And that doesn't really help anybody. Another concern I have is that, you know, they talk about the debris and and such. Which is their responsibility to be having that taken care of. I'm surprised the town hasn't assessed them for that. But, you know, I I just have great concerns that. This house being built will create. Problems with, you know, the movement of the ground with regard to the existing foundations. To these homes that are very old. I think mine is like fifty-five years old. And, you know, this movement was cracks in our foundation. And then for her to be right on top of her neighbors, because the lot is so small. And to have a one-car garage, so that's kind of making matters worse. Let's not only shove a house on a piece of land that's too small, but let's also put a garage there as well. I really, you know, I I'm sorry that this has happened to them. And and perhaps one of the neighbors will purchase the land from them. But I don't see why we as their neighbors should be imposed upon because of this. If I'm making myself clear, I don't know if I am.
Yes, no, thank you for those for those comments, questions or comments from board members. All right, thank you very much for coming out. Mr. Davis, Ms. Langer is advising us that she wishes to speak, would you like to take that now? All right, then, Ms. Langer, I will start with you. I I guess we should start by having you sworn, so if you can give your attention to the board attorney, please.
So I always swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth.
Ms. Langer, you you have yourself on mute, I did see you come off, but you went back on. And now you're off again, there you go. So I didn't, you didn't indicate yes to that last question, let's start with your name and address, please.
Lily Langer, thirty-seven Elmerich Drive, Scarsville, New York, one oh five eight three.
Thank you, and what did you want to add to this application?
I've passed the property a number of times this year, just to check on it, since my father's not able to. And, you know, I've noticed big home, new homes being built down the block, small homes, old homes, new homes. And, you know, I could only say that I think a house built on that property would only enhance the block. My father purchased this with intentions of selling it. You know, with the with the thought that this would never be an issue. And was, you know, he's paid taxes so many years, and so has my brother, that I I'm finding this a little surprising. You know, if new homes were built on my block or people enhanced the block, I'd be thankful, it would only help the value of my own home. The property is a sixty by two eighteen or sixty-one by two eighteen. You know, it's it to be left empty on a street is only asking for trouble. This is a, my father's paid taxes for years on this. To to say sell it to a neighbor for pennies. It makes no sense. It could only enhance the neighborhood, that's, you know, otherwise Larry Davis has said everything, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, I'll give you an opportunity to respond to everything that you've just heard.
I just want to comment. The two neighbors that are opposing this application, I want to remind them. That the debris that is being put on their property is from their neighbors. Their neighbors are creating a bad situation within their own neighborhood. A new house, as Ms. Langer and Mr. Frager had indicated, would only enhance this neighborhood. And probably create value and increase the value of the existing neighborhood. With that all said, Mr. Chairman, I would hope that the board would take all of the legal. Arguments into consideration when when they deliberate on this and come out with a favorable result on behalf of my clients.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Davis.
Mr. Burksen, yes.
Larry.
Yes.
From your perspective, is there a difference between the status of this lot and the sixty footer that's to the west, I guess?
The difference is the sixty footer to the west is commonly owned with the property directly to the south of it. So any application for variance would have to be as a result of a land division. And Mr. Chairman and I have already discussed that a land division is treated differently than an individual parcel by this board. And that application would be a different application than the one that you're seeing here today.
Okay, I just wanted to, I wasn't totally clear on that point, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, on that issue, the at the end of the day, we would be considering. Creating the creation of a sixty-one foot lot. One through a land division and one through an application such as Mr. Davis is bringing on behalf of the applicants. Is there anything further from the board? All right, then, I'm going to ask the board for a motion. Motion is to close and hold, Mr. Davis, again, with our agreement that, let's say, within within ten days, if you could provide the board with the copies of the certificates that you. Mentioned on the record, and we certainly would be happy. and we certainly would be happy to take an email, scanned copy, and that would be perfect. Okay?
It will, Ms. Riccardi will have it when she gets in.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Davis. There's a motion is made, and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This is, we just finished case number 21. We have six cases left in a two o'clock interval, but I'm going to ask the board for a 15-minute break. So is there a motion for brief recess? Motion and second have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries.
...
Mr. Chairman.
Hey Paul.
Mr. Burksen.
Mr. Chairman.
I can hear you, but I don't see you.
Well, because you won't let me start the video.
Please start the video. All right, yeah, so we're looking for Mr. Lindsay. And Mr. Ah, there he is, and Mr. Lazaru.
I'm trying.
Oh, I hear you. That's good. Very good.
There.
There we go. All right. Is there a motion to resume the hearing? Motion second amendment made all in favor. Opposed motion carries will resume this hearing with case twenty-two. Laura, you're on mute.
Case number twenty-two, Arm of Paul Singh, eight Nantucket Way, Mount Sinai, properties located on the south side Nantucket Way, four hundred and forty feet east of Vineyard Way, Mount Sinai. Applicant requests height variance for existing six-foot-high fence located in the front yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Diana Spisa for the applicant. I also have the applicant, Arm of Paul.
Thank you. Mrs. Spisa, I can see you can hear us.
Yes.
Very good. The applicant is here with us also. Are they here to view, or did you want them to participate?
I think he's just here just to be present, but I don't believe he intends to speak.
All right, Mr. Vega, you can let Mr. Mr. Singh know that if he likes to, if he would like to participate, just please indicate that to you. Mrs. Spisa, let's, if you could, just please give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
I do.
Very good. We'll start with your appearance for the record, please.
Diana LaSpisa with Moreno Expediting, twenty-eight Edward Street, Bethpage, New York, one-one-seven-one-four, here on behalf of the property owner, Arm of Paul Singh. And we're requesting permission from the board today to maintain an existing six-foot PVC fence forward of the front foundation line along Nantucket Way. Mr. Singh had a pool installed last year, after which he had the fencing installed as well. It was done by a fence company. He was unaware that there was any restrictions on the corner lot as far as the location of the fence. It is set back fairly far from the road, so it doesn't obstruct the traffic. I do have some photos that I would like to show the board if if Mr. Vega, if the board wants, and Mr. Vega would need to, I guess, take his screen down.
Is it, is it, is that photographs of the of the fence itself?
The fence, and just to show that there's no obstruction of traffic for any cars traveling along.
We certainly see that it's close to forty feet from Nantucket Way, so I wouldn't expect that there would would be. The front, the front of the setback of the house is forty-two, and this is just, was it four feet difference?
Yes, and that's at its closest point, and then it gets further and further away, the further west you travel along Nantucket. And the purpose, just so the board knows, of the placement of the fence is because he has about ten or eleven large pine trees that he wanted to incorporate. He didn't want to cut them down. He doesn't have clearing limits, so he has the right to cut them down, but he wanted to maintain them. They provide some nice shade area for the yard. So he wanted to incorporate those into his backyard. So the fencing is just right outside of those pine tree canopy. I have a picture if the board wants to see.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have no questions.
No questions from the board. Is there anything further from the board? If not, unless for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion by Mr. Kuni, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries?
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Case number twenty-three, Chris and Adele Kang Deliri, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the west side of Woodland Road, two thousand five hundred and forty-six feet north of Mariches, Middle Island Road, Manorville. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing detached garage with roof over exceeding the six hundred square feet permitted, six hundred and seventy-two square feet.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Mr. Magguanera, are you back with us?
I am.
Very good. I was just looking back to see the the over square footage of your last garage. Was it also seventy-two square feet?
It was right there. It was right there.
Yeah, case number twenty. So are you doing this measuring, and everything's going to be the same, or is someone else doing it?
Someone else doing it. I don't, I don't do the measuring.
You've previously been sworn. Let's have your name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent for the applicant.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
All right, we're going for a detached garage. Been here since two thousand and one. It is set back well over a hundred feet from the property line. It is not significantly over the square footage. It is not over the height, and if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Questions from the board. Uh, that would be Mr. Lindsay.
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So two thousand and one, the garage has been there?
Yes.
Okay, what, do they use it? Do you have pictures of that garage you could put up on a camera and show us?
Absolutely. I was, I was prepared for that one. Yep.
Okay, what do they, so it's only fourteen foot high, correct?
Correct. Strict, straight garage.
Okay, it's seventy-two feet over the limit?
Exactly right.
Seventy-two square feet. Okay, there are other garages in the neighborhood that are similar?
There are. Next door has has a garage, right, as you can see from the aerial, and there are garages. As you can see, a really big lot, and it is set back from the the street pretty significantly.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board? There's a board of a motion.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to grant the application type two is presented. Thank you.
A motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries?
Case number twenty-four, Chetima Turner, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the south side of Park Ridge Circle, one hundred and fifty-eight feet east of Bicycle Path, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Malguanera, your appearance for the record, please.
Yes, Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. We do see the dimension of the parcel here. You are seeking a side yard variance for the pool. Tell us about the reason.
Yeah, so it's basically just a matter of the size of the, the way the property is shaped, a unique lot. Really, the only spike, but a pool, they, they kind of want, they, you know, want to do six feet. I, I told them, you know, we're probably more likely to get eight, so we went for that. And as you see, you got the masonry patio right there, so you can't, you can't, you know, inch it anymore than than currently is constituted. There are lots in the area with similar, with similar situations. The lot diagonal from us across the street on forty-six has a pool in the corner as well, very similar to what we're asking, and thirty-five as well, has has similar, and again, based off the nature of the characteristics of the of the lot, you know, had it been a normal lot, we would, you know, we'd probably have the room, but we don't, and it's not a big pool, it's, you know, average. And board has any questions? Please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lazaru.
Okay, um, Mr. Malguanera, what is the size of the pool?
The exact size of the pool is thirty-four by twenty.
Thirty-four by twenty?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any consideration for rotating it slightly so it may be more parallel with the back of the house? Except for the fact that you might say you'd have to move the fire pit.
Yeah, I mean, you'd be up against the patio. It's pretty tight as is, you know, I don't know, I see what you're saying, but I mean, we're keeping it parallel with the fence. And moved it over, I think we'd be closer than the eight foot, and I, you know, it's a tight squeeze, just the nature of the lot, you know, if there was another way to do it, we, you know, for sure would.
Yeah, and you say the only example was that lot across the street?
Um, well, the lot across the street is one example, because of, because of the shape of the lot, almost, you know, very similar. There are thirty-one and forty, both have, you know, tight side yards as well. Forty-two across the way, Silatota Road, excuse my pronunciation, has a similar setback that we're requesting. And again, our lot is by far the most unique in the area. There's no lot quite as tight as ours, you know, so that's kind of why we need to ask for what we're asking for.
Guys, no consideration on making the pool smaller?
Um, I, I don't, you know, I, it, I don't think, I think even if you made it smaller in some capacity, I think we'd still be, we still need the eight foot, you know, so you know, it, we could, you know, the length, but like, you know, the width of it is is kind of set, and it's kind of the pool they wanted, so.
Well, we always want what we want, but maybe not sometimes don't get it.
Oh, listen, I understand, I understand that. I understand that.
Right. Nonetheless, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaru. Was there anything further from the board? There's a board of a motion.
I would say grant the application type two.
Motion by Mr. Lazaru to grant us a type-two application, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Case number twenty-five, James Scott and Katrina Leann, care of Andrew Malguanera, located North Side South Street, four hundred feet east of South Street, South Side Hill Street, Manorville. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing detached garage exceeding the six hundred square feet permitted, six hundred and ninety-four square feet, located in the required side yard, also side yard variance for existing gazebo.
Mr. Malguanera, your appearance for the record, please.
Yes, Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, agent for the applicant.
So you're done with six seventy-two, now we're going to move to six ninety-four?
Uh, not, is this?
Yeah, it's six ninety-four.
Oh, okay, well, it's, isn't it South Street?
No, six ninety-four is in square footage of the detached.
Yes, 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 right? I'm staying under that seven hundred square feet for you guys, you know?
We see that. What, what do you want to tell us here?
So what we have here is detached garage. It's been there since two thousand and, excuse me, I got the exact date. It's been there since ninety-six, I believe, and the gazebo around the same time, there was a detached garage in the same spot on a CEU from nineteen seventy, which obviously states that it was there pre-fifty-nine, a smaller detached garage, but in the same spot. Again, this is not a tremendous, you know, garage, and it falls in line with the house, and it doesn't affect the character and neighborhood. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
Andrew, how big is this lot?
It's big. It's big. It's a, it's a long lot. I don't know the, I don't have the exact lot area. See if I have it on the survey.
Do you think you could have found a spot for the gazebo that wouldn't require a variance?
I mean, listen, yeah, I mean, but it's an old gazebo, and it's been there since ninety-six, so like, if you were to, if you were to move it, I mean, you're replacing it, you know, so it's more of a instead of, you know, spending the money to to do so, it's not a big gazebo, and you are right, it is, there is plenty of lot, but it's been there for, you know, twenty-five years, so you know, it's kind of, you know, a fixture, more or less, for the, for the lot.
So how much of a variance are we granting to this twenty-five-year-old gazebo that could go anyplace on this lot?
Well, it's A-two zone, so anything but A-two, and we're good, but we're in A-two, so it is, it is still hold eleven feet, so it's not exactly on the line, as you can see. It's required to hold twenty, we have eleven. You know, you know, he paid his penalty, you know, I mean, it's one of those things that, again, he would, it'd be a hardship in the sense that he'd have to replace the gazebo, not really move it, you know, if it was a brand-new gazebo, and he just did it, it'd be a lot easier to do.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Just bear with me one moment. All right, then, I guess for the record, Mr. Malguanera, I should say that I was looking at the building denial. You, you have a letter of correction pending for the wraparound porch. If it is granted, that's, you don't need to come back, but if it's not, then you'll, you'll see us again for that wraparound porch. You were, you're aware of that.
Yes, our, the owner of this lot live next door, so, you know, it looks, it looks, they say it's been there, so I think it would be all right.
Very good. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Move to approve the application submitted type two, second.
And that was by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, I think that you're with us on the holdover counter. Well, we'll talk to me about that for a moment. It is.
One.
I didn't get anything.
We don't have a postponement. I was going to hold it indefinitely because we're waiting for an inspection.
Right, we're having an issue with getting an inspector out there on, that's number, that's Carol. Not true.
Well, well, Larry's mic is on, so you're hearing everything she's saying.
Fine.
What, what I would like, what I'd like to do with it is hold it indefinitely so that when you can get the inspection straight.
Absolutely.
And we'll get the inspection report, then you could just renotice it, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so, so that what I will do, if that's your last application, is I'll take, I'll ask the board for that motion now, and specifically, I'm referring to right, yeah, page fifteen, case number seventeen of May sixth, two thousand and twenty, in the name of Carol Manel, M-A-N-E-L, so motion for, to postpone indefinitely.
So moved.
Motion second amendment made all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Malguanera, good to see you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. Me too.
Case number 26, Ryan McGann, 338 Main Street, East of Talkit. Properties located on the south side of Main Street, 214 feet west of Old Coach Road, East of Talkit. Applicant requests height variance for proposed 20.33-foot-high barn.
Mr. Chairman, I have the applicant, Robert Ryan McGann. I also have a Robert Vestigo and a Tom Maltz. You're unmuted, Mr. Chairman.
I do, I do, I know that we have speakers on this application, so we'll hear from the applicant first before bringing anyone else up. And, Mr. McGann?
Yes.
Yeah, we can see and hear you very well. Can you, please?
I'll get rid of this background, I distract him.
That's not your hydroponic farm there?
Yeah, yeah, we can see.
All right, and then, then that's sufficient. If you could just please give your attention to the board's attorney, John Doyle, and he will swear you in.
It's always worth telling the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth. I do.
Let's start with your name and address, please.
My name is Ryan McGann, 338 Main Street, in East of Talkit.
Very good, sir. The, well, the board is familiar, familiar with the relief request that you've made. Specifically, you're here for a variance for a barn that you intend to construct. It's a proposed barn. And the only contradiction to code requirements for the barn is that you're requesting a height of 20.33 feet where 18 feet is permitted. Meaning the barn setbacks satisfy town code of 50 feet, in this case, 60 on one side and 52 on the other. So you're only here for that foot and a half or so. I'm sorry, just over two feet of height for the proposed barn. So tell us a little bit about the parcel and what the intended use of the barn is.
Sure, it is a flag-shaped lot, as you can see here, and this will be set quite a ways back in that lot. And we'll be using this barn for processing and packaging of the hydroponically grown lettuces and leafy greens that we are growing on the property.
All right. I, uh, tell us, um, tell us in, in terms of the, the barn itself, what you're saying, processing and packaging of leaf greens. So it sounds to me like the processing and packaging has to occur within a fairly quick period because the leaf greens would then perish.
Yeah, so we may have, you know, we may have refrigeration in the barn, we may not, depends on the volume. We'll also have a robotics research, kind of like a little lab in the barn as well. But this is mostly primarily for, uh, post-processing and packaging of the crops that are harvested.
All right. Very good. Questions from the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
How are you, Mr. McGann?
Great. How are you doing?
Very good.
Going into overtime here.
Yeah. So, um, you know, we're looking at just, uh, above two feet, um, over the, uh, the permitted. There a specific reason why 18 feet does not work for you?
So I wanted to comply with the historical society, and they wrote me a letter. I sent it in a little bit late. If I have it here, supporting it, and they wanted to keep the roof pitch, so it's in compliance with historical barns of the era in the, in the area.
Okay, so it's an architectural issue. Do, did we get a copy of that, uh, by any chance?
I emailed them later. I'm not sure if it was sent in earlier as well, but, um.
Mr. McGann, why don't you do me a favor? I'm going to ask you to provide, it doesn't appear that we have it.
You know what? I, I did, I got it earlier. Um, I got it the other day. Um, I didn't realize it was the same thing that he emailed today.
Mr. Carty, um, we certainly have it, then we will read it for the record.
Okay, um, this is dated August 24th. The HDAC strongly supports the nominal height variance needed to provide the steep roof pitch of the proposed barn. By letter dated August 19th, the HDAC recommended preliminary approval of the proposed barn, and they attached the, uh, August 19th letter.
All right, is, uh, Mr. McGann, do you have any, uh, any drawings or anything that, uh, what this is going to look like?
We do, and I did provide, I could show you on the screen here. I got all the drawings, architectural plans, and I have an image of a similar-looking barn that I also provided with the application, but I can show on the screen here, or share my screen for it. There we go, we got two of them up there.
So that window up on this, well, this isn't actually your barn, but I'm seeing that it almost has a window up, almost like there is a second level to it. Is, uh, is that what you're planning as well?
I mean, there's a small, like, storage area up top that will be storing boxes of probably two to three months' worth of packaging.
So it will be primarily storage, and how will that be accessed?
Uh, there's like, I think wooden stairs. I'm not sure if they're drop-down. No, they're not drop-down, they're stairs, they go up there. But they're, uh, like garage-style stairs.
Right, and when you talk about storage on that second level, how is that second level constructed as far as the flooring?
That's a good question. I mean, it's not like finished or anything. This is like a, like a barn, you know? I think it's just plywood.
Well, the reason I ask is because you spoke a little bit earlier about, you know, possible refrigeration, which, of course, that would include electricity. And, uh, I'm just considering the fact that there could be concerns maybe from the neighbors as far as what the use of that barn, uh, may end up to be.
I see.
Once the packaging issue or, or this, uh, may, may no longer exist. And I have a feeling that there's probably some concerns about turning it into, into a, uh, more of a living situation. So I think that probably, what is what would be most concerning of maybe residents as well as this board. So maybe, um, give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about that, and maybe then we can, uh, listen to some of the folks that are here to speak on it as well.
Sure, of course. So the, um, this will be like same-day harvest and delivery mostly, uh, or the next day. And the farm systems that are growing these are refrigerated. So most likely they'll be, you know, brought out, packaged clean, anything needs to get done, labeled, and then brought back in for delivery next day or later that same day. Ideally, I don't want to have to build a separate refrigeration system inside the barn. But that's, you know, that would be an option. There's no intent whatsoever to have livable space inside the barn. This is just like a barn, like tools, workshop, uh, and processing and packaging for agricultural purposes.
And then, um, so as far as the packaging and, and moving of those goods, so I see you have your, your, your long driveway that then turns into, further turns into a dirt driveway. Um, I'm imagining that that will be the access in and out of the barn area.
Yes.
And what type of vehicles would be used to transport the packaging?
I have a Sprinter van, Mercedes Sprinter van.
Gotcha. And that's it? You just have the one van, and that, that pretty much does all the deliveries?
All I need.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, uh, I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McGann, I did review the permitting process for your parcel. Um, you described your, your, your facility as, um, practicing vertical hydroponic farming. A project that, uh, that you are, um, developing. And one of the permits said farming equipment built into eight-by-40 shipping container. So in looking at your survey, um, we see three containers there, that, that you're showing us that were drawn in. Is this, or is it within these containers that you are growing?
Yes, that's the farming equipment.
So the, the, it's not grown outside on, in, in the ground, it's grown inside the containers?
Yep, all year long.
And I think, grown with artificial lighting?
Yeah, all LEDs, and they're specifically tuned to the crop that we're growing, and everything is like AI monitored. It's really awesome technology.
All right, and, uh, in, in one part of the permitting references, in the information you provided, the building department was, uh, mentioned four of these eight-by-40 shipping containers. Um, we see three on the survey. Did you determine that three was, um, all that was necessary, or is there intention to add more?
Three is sufficient.
Three is sufficient. All right. We do have speakers on.
If we expand, it'll be to a off-site larger property. This is really, uh, we're using our, our lot that we own as like a test pilot site essentially for these. And then we'll expand off-site, and the plan is more like to put a few containers every 20 miles of delivery, like one in Huntington, one in the Hamptons, et cetera.
And then that would make sense. But in terms of this particular lot, it appears, it appears to be, it appears that it will get busier with the addition of the barn and the shipping containers, and that I know that there's two one-family dwellings on the parcel as they are. So there, there's somewhere, there exists a certificate of existing use for two houses on one parcel for this property. This, the location of the shipping containers, though, um, is, is of interest to me because I note that it is immediately adjacent to a, we're, um, yard residential use. Um, are the, as you, is there a reason why you picked that corner of the parcel for those shipping containers?
Uh, yeah, so that is the ideal location when it comes to like running power and also not obstructing too much usage, and I'm able to also get in and out of the lot. So it maximizes usage and of the property, uh, the shortest power run and allows usability and mobility around the lot.
And, and did you consider the opposite corner, meaning the other side of the location of the proposed barn?
Uh, well, then the barn would be there. So if you switch the, the.
On the barn, the barn would stay in the same location. Um, you would, you would.
It's like a hill, so I wouldn't really be able to place them unless I excavated out the hill.
And, um, did you, did, did you consider any other location on the parcel that's not immediately?
I had about like, six other layouts, really. The only other one that would be best would be really right in front of the adjacent lot next to it. So if you moved it in Eastmore, um, that would be the other location we were considering.
Mr. Bigga, do we have an aerial of this lawn? All right, um, so the aerial of the lot shows us, if you could pull, just pull, yeah, there you go, pull it closer. Fairly good vegetation in the rear, so the shipping containers wouldn't affect anything or anyone back there. Although you're saying this, uh, there's, there's some sort of increase in the, in the grade.
We, we leveled it out, yeah, we put a fence in the area.
You, you leveled what up?
It was like a little bit of a valley, where we just, we filled it in with dirt.
And what's, what section was a bit of a valley?
The driveway, and then the back part, you can see a rock. Uh, you know, those are like the same height, so we filled in that valley. It maintained along the property launch, we maintained a one-over-three grade. Uh, and there is no, uh, increase in runoff or anything. It's essentially, we have the same, you know, water flow that was before, just kind of filled in the valley.
And, and what's the difference then in grade, since you filled in the valley with, um, the, I'm just looking at the directions on your survey here.
Now, okay, so is this, I mean, this was just for a height increase in the barn?
This is just for height increase in the barn, but as a condition to any variance this board would give, I think that, uh, there could be some reasonable conditions imposed. And this is one of the things that I, at least I, as a board member, are looking at. So on the southern end of your parcel, um, how does it, how does the grade change since you filled in the valley?
Oh, well, that goes up higher. That goes up much higher. So these houses, like lot number eight, that's significantly higher than, uh, the one behind us than our property. So if I was to put it that, it's, it's, yeah. That back, so that southeast corner is a hill. We actually go sleigh riding on it, uh, when it snows.
All right, and, and, uh, obviously then, uh, you're saying while the grade has changed, we can both agree that the, the shipping containers can be placed in that location, they would just have to be tiered.
Uh, yes, and, you know, it was, yeah, I mean, we, we pretty much wanted to bring the whole grade flat or like at a less deep bend, like fill in the valley that we had there.
All right, um, we do have speakers on the application. We'll hear them, um, for the record, Mr. Big, if you'd like to bring them up.
I have a Tom Maltz and then Robert Vestigo.
Mr. Vestigo, we can see you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Mr. Maltz, again, same thing. We can see you, can you hear us?
Uh, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can see you also. I'm going to ask you both to please give your attention to the board's attorney, Tobias Form.
It's always worth telling the truth, the whole truth, but nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
All right, so let's start with Mr. Maltz. Sir, I have, um, for the record, I should indicate that we have three emails with attachments from you, um, dated Tuesday, September 8th, 2023, 10:00 PM, November 4, 2024, 13:00 PM, November 4, 2020, 4:22 PM.
Okay.
And, and there's another that Mr. Carty has, and we've made them all part of the record. I'm not going to read each one individually because you're here and you're going to give us testimony. I will tell you, though, that the photographs attached, um, are part of the record. But let's start first with your name and address, please.
Sure. Tom Maltz, 336 Main Street, in East of Talkit.
All right, and, um, what, what would you like to tell us about the, uh, the application that's before us?
Uh, well, I learned a, a few more things. Um, the, uh, Chief Building Inspector, Graham, gave me a call today. I had been trying to speak with him, uh, since we saw the Trailers come on, on Thursday. And, um, I'm, uh, just trying to grapple with, uh, how, how the town runs farming and, uh, what you can do if you suddenly decide to farm. And, um, you know, so I, I explained to the chief that I'm, was online waiting for the name to come up. And, uh, you know, I'd like to talk to him and, and go over and have a lot of the questions that I posted to you guys that, uh, were, were unanswered, and, um, he, he said he would speak with me next week about a lot of this. But he also, you know, we brought up the fact that some of the documents that I tried to retrieve, uh, through the Freedom of Information Act back in July, after the 20-day waiting period, I didn't get all the documents I wanted. On August 21st, they requested some more documents, uh, so I could see what was being proposed in my back, you know, beyond my property line. And, uh, I just got those, uh, a few hours ago. So I'm, to understand in the barn as well, uh, he's looking to have a, a bathroom. I don't know if that includes a shower. So I was curious about that. I didn't know, um, if Mr. McGann at some points decides not to farm anymore. Are all these structures removed? You know, how does that work in, you know, 10 years down the road or something, or whenever that is? I was also curious, uh, is the variance today strictly about the height of the building or about that he wanted to put a bathroom in the barn? And that, is that what caused the historical society to become involved? Or was it just strictly the height? Because, uh, legal had said that, technically, if you wanted to make a 40-foot grain silo, that would be permissible, uh, under the auspices of the Farm Bill. The interesting thing that I learned in my, uh, short conversation with Inspector Graham, uh, you know, I did take the time to try and ask some of the questions on here. Uh, you know, how does one start a project like this? Mr. McGann said he spoke to the Chief Building Inspector and got a verbal approval on the containers. And when I proposed that to the Chief Building Inspector, well, he seemed almost a little sheepish, like Mr. McGann didn't even have to speak to him, that everything that's going on in the property behind me needs no, uh, oversight by anyone in the town of Brookhaven because it's all legal, because he chose. Because he chose a farming operation and that just. By doing something that has anything to do with agriculture. You eliminate. Right off the bat, because you're going to farm something, any oversight. So. I'm, you know, I'm concerned about the dilemma I'm in now, but I'm also looking to the future and how to. Press the case with the legislature to get laws in place. So that nobody else has to look at what I'm looking at.
All right, well, the.
Of the pictures I sent, but, uh. Uh, I haven't found anybody who, who found it believable that someone could do what's being done.
Um, Mr. Maltz, you bring up, you bring up, you bring up a great many issues, but when you say, um. No one can knows what you're looking at. You haven't described that for the record. So why don't you do that?
Sure, uh, I have, uh. Three 10 foot by 40 foot shipping containers. Uh, look just like something would be on the back of a truck. Uh, I'm not sure about the, uh. Ventilation units, uh, I'm not sure about the noise that will come from the units. I don't know what the town's position is on, uh. The atmosphere inside the containers. I don't know, um. You know, plants need CO to grow is, are those levels hazardous? My kids play 20 feet from those containers. Um, you know, I guess I, I can look at some of the other, uh, you know. You know, what is the decimal level one, uh, one, uh, one is operating, uh. You know, uh, what else can other people do in these containers? What else can they grow in there? You know, I also had questions about, um, you know. Mr. McGann filled in. All of the land back there. Now, the rock he referenced is a, uh, I guess from the Ice Age. And the way that the water moves, uh, through, through eight. And the area back there, there's some wetlands area back there as well, uh, office property. Uh, that when you have a heavy storm, uh, and we don't have them often, but when you have those days where you get that. Three or four inches of rain per hour kind of rate coming down. All of the, uh, water washes down. Towards where he has those containers now and the barn. And then it flows into 334 and 332. At 332 in the lower, uh, well, I guess in the northwest corner, there's a culvert. And all that water then goes down into the, uh, into the inlet. Unless of course it's high tide, in which case it backs up. And myself and Mr. Vestigo have, uh, lived through that before. Especially 332 because their entire yard was inundated. Uh, so it's a considerable amount of water, nothing that would be, uh, satisfied by, uh. You know, a typical, uh, dry well, you, you know, you need a football sized dry well for the amount of water that comes through there. Uh, we alerted, uh, Mr. McGann of this several times. Uh, but he chose to ignore it. I don't think he's put in anything under those containers to allow the water to go through. I know it is illegal to divert water and this is a rare instance where you get a rain like that. You know, unless hurricane or tropical storm is going to hit the area, then you get it, uh, so. I don't know if any planning went in with, uh. With the town as to, uh. How to alleviate those situations when the water does come through. Uh, but that is the lay of the land, uh, you know, uh, the DEC has all that as far as, uh. How it flows through there and you can go all the ways down, uh. Old Coach Road till you get to Old Post Road. So that whole area back there. Um, drains through there on a heavy rain. Um, you know, being, all you have to do is say you're farming and you can. Not have a site plan and just start building and changing everything. Uh, was kind of remarkable to me and, and hard to believe, but it, it does seem like a lot of this is, uh, permitted. Um, so again, you know, and looking to the future, uh, it just seems like we need a better handle on, uh, how to handle this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Maltz. We certainly, um, heard the issues that are ongoing. I want to let you know that for the purposes of this. Hearing the board's, uh, attention and the request for variance relief pertains only to the height of the barn. Nothing, nothing about the barn itself, other than the fact that it is not 18 feet high. 20, it's 20.33 feet. So apart for, for that two feet point three, three inches. The applicant would not be before the Board of Zoning Appeals and in fact could build this barn with a permit. At the permitted 18 foot height. So the board has before the 18 foot. I certainly looked at the, uh, brought up the issue of the location of the farming. Uh, the shipping containers, um, you, uh, you brought up, um, even more issues, but. That, one of the questions was, what are we doing here today? And we, we are hearing variance relief for two feet height for a barn.
I understand. They just said that this would be the only time I'd be heard now on this matter, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Does someone else?
A, a square garage type, type style, but I wanted to keep with the historical theme and work with the historical department. That's why I went with the barn.
All right, we do have another speaker. Um, I'm not sure, we're, Mr. Vestigo, thank you. So you've previously been sworn and could you just give us your name and address, please?
My name is Robert Vestigo. I live at 334 Main Streets of Tocken.
Very good, sir. And what did you want to add to the conversation?
If you could bring up the, uh, survey chart, thank you. I may pull a little slightly to the, uh, east, west rather than east, right, there you go. Um, Mr. Chairman, you brought up some of the issues that really I was concerned or I still concern me. And, um. I'll let you just address those just briefly. I don't want to go back over the email that I sent to you, nor I think you have the photographs, so you can see pretty much what I'm talking about. I find it. I'm almost speechless that we're sitting here talking about inconsequential change in a roof peak of two feet. That is going to now be in line with the, uh, architecture of the area. My house is from 1830s, by the way, small plot. Uh, Mr. Maltz's house is from the 1700s. This is a historic area. So when we talk about saving what this, 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 uh, uh. Community is supposed to look like, and we're talking about how this roof pitch is supposed to be a certain pitch. And the, the height is supposed to be two feet higher to allow this, and it's wonderful. And I think, and I now really think that the idea of using hydroponic farming in containers sounds like a wonderful idea. I mean, I see that as possibly being something to be, uh, very, uh, in the future, being something which we can advance that will help, um. I guess all people. However, we're again are in the historic district of Satake. And when you brought up where those containers are being placed and you looked at those photographs. My house, when I look towards the south. Used to have a flat land. There was a bit of a gully there. This is the, the area where the, uh, water would come through. It's pretty much where the barn would be. And as the upper level of the property where he had, uh, uh, was talking about how that has a, uh. There's an elevated part of the property behind him, behind the barn. When he put in the, when he started this in the March, he raised the elevator of the property behind me by at least four feet of soil. I only have 50, about 50, 50 feet across the back. One of those farm containers that was placed in, in place last week, last Thursday. Covers almost the entire back portion of my property. When I look back there, what do I see? I see six feet of, uh, four feet rise. All right, that's, that's first thing. Then we have another, then we have a fence, a wooden fence that I was assured, by the way, Mr. McGann. Did tell us that we would, once the fence went up, we would not see these containers. And maybe that was the case when he had a thought of putting the containers in different area. But if we look at those photographs, I see four, five feet of white box. This is a, this is not a nice greenhouse. That matches that beautiful barn. This is a greenhouse. It's a shipping container, period. White, that obstructs my view. And now you can see it from the street, by the way. This is not something that's hidden. And the only reason why it's not as visible from the streets because we're now in summer, going into autumn, once the leaves drop, we will see that. And then getting back to the barn very, uh, height variance. This just adds one more element to this piece of property that we didn't anticipate when we purchased this property, this land in this area. And looking back, I see these white containers. Now I'm going to see an idyllic peak of a barn. Nice. But it doesn't work in this area. At least something could have been done to replace these containers. Some way to make it so all this would have been unnecessary, certainly from the visual standpoint. As far as the, uh, Formula Builder rights and allowing him to, to build these structures. Uh, I don't understand how then that is supposed to. I'm supposed to now pay by my diminished property value and quality of life. We had, you know, we did spend a lot of money and time building a small plot, but building a wonderful spot in the backyard. Where it's relaxing now. It looks like it's a parking lot. And by the way, as far as the farming bill of rights go, when he's putting the barn on top of this one area, which has been a little bit elevated. The land isn't being farmed, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman. It's in the containers, which means in all this elevation leveling land is a parking lot. And I don't know about town of Brookhaven, but I would think then that's a little bit different than just putting a greenhouse. Let's say in Stop and Shop Center, Parking Lot Center, we can do that too, might as well. Because then that would mean that that parking lot would become part of Farmerland Bill of Rights. Something's not right here. And I get a little emotional about it because, you know, we. Bought this house with the intention of having, it's a beautiful spot. And Mr. McGann would agree with that as well. I mean, he has a beautiful piece of property. Uh, it's a nice plot in the back. But now. It isn't. So all the things that Mr. Moss was talking about, yes, I agree with, uh, the concerns that he has, the, the flooding and so forth. And we did bring that up to Mr. McGann and. I don't know what's going to happen in the future. I can't predict that. But the, uh. I think our emails and our photographs and whatnot just voice our, our position. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Vestigo. Very, thank you very much for coming out. Mr. McGann, I'll give you the opportunity to respond. Great. Obviously, we're dealing with a conflict between what you're entitled to do if, uh. If you enjoy the benefit to the Farming Bill of Rights, but we're also, um, in conflict with the. A1 zoning classification that is most likely, um. Governing all of the surrounding lots. Your two neighbors just, um, indicated to you what they feel about the placement, your decision to place these shipping containers where you've placed them. Um, what response did you have?
Sure. So I know change is difficult and, you know, like the Farmers Bill of Rights says, the benefits of farming far outweigh the nascent complaints of neighbors. Uh, this is, we are currently under construction, right? So right now, yeah, it has dirt. Uh, and the equipment is, the equipment was being moved in and it's uncomfortable, right? But when the project is over, the property will look 10 times better than it was before and provide localized. Fresh produce to the area, uh, especially when people couldn't get it during the pandemic, it's good. Uh, we were, uh, complying with all of the grading regulations across the property line. And spoke with the town about that many times, even had the DEC on site to inspect. Everything is clear. We got passes and all that. Uh, I was planning on putting trees up, uh, to kind of help the neighbors out and block the view. Not necessary. Uh, it was a consideration. Uh, and just also want to state, we are on a main road. Extremely loud, it's noisy, lots of traffic.
But let me ask you, sir, when you have an alternative location and when you. Hear what you just heard, does, does it make you feel like maybe the alternative location should be considered? Like, like for instance, let's look at your parcel. You have a, what you call a tarp carport. On the, uh, on the, what is that? On the east side there?
Yes.
It, that, that's a flat area where, where you're parking your car, right? Give me wisdom. Can I ask you to, well, yeah, I'll do this. Okay. So, so and on the other side of that, as I look at the aerial, this looks like a big garage there. On the other side of the fence there from that.
Now, yeah.
It, it, it seems to be a large structure, but it certainly is, it's not a residential use. So tell me that.
Where are you looking?
You, you, your survey tells me it's, you have a tarp carport 12 by 20.
Yes.
All right. And on the other side of that, it doesn't look like a residential use.
I just wanted to balance out the property. You know, if I had everything along that one strip, the two houses, the parking, like, uh, the, the containers, the.
I mean, I, I mentioned it was a busy, it was certainly a busy use on, on this parcel. But you're, you're concerned about balancing, meaning the aesthetics of it?
Yeah, use of it and aesthetics and, you know, kind of.
So the, but, but you agree with me then that that's an alternative location. You just didn't like everything on one side.
Well, I mean, alternative, and then I would have an other neighbor possibly on this call saying, oh, it should have been the other side of the yard. So. Really, there's no way I could have put it down. Sure, I wouldn't get.
But that's, that's structure is not a residential use there.
Wait, what was that?
Whatever is on the other side of your, uh, of your, uh, easterly property line. Mr. Vega, can we put up the air, the aerial again, please? There's a.
That is residential. They just, the guy who owned it was a big masonry guy and did all.
The large black, um, shingled roof structure in the rear of the parcel identified as 342, what is that?
That's a multi-car three-story garage.
All right. So that's not again a residential use. It's a detached garage. And the, in the area where your carport is, which would be just on the other side of whatever separation there is by fence or, or vegetation. Um, is a location. Um, and you're saying the aesthetics to you is, is, uh. Is more significant than the effect that the containers you just heard are having on your neighbors. And I'm, I'm, I'd like to explore that. I want, want to understand your reasoning.
Well, I mean, I have all this property and I wanted to balance it out and maximize the use of the property. At the same time, not really, you know, keep it balanced. It doesn't look like it's overmassed in any way.
Cause you don't want the shipping containers close to the rental house on the property.
I mean, it's.
Right, I mean, it would probably affect the value of the rental.
If. This is a flag shape up, okay? So has the flag part is essentially unused. And I want to make use of that.
Okay. Is there anything further from the board on the application?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Um, yeah, uh, Mr. McGann, uh, my, my question is going back to those containers. And I believe one of the, one of the neighbors stated that you raised the grade in that area. How high did you raise the grade?
In the furthest part, it was like three and a half ish feet.
Wait, wait, what, what is the furthest part? You're going to have to describe it to me here.
So in the furthest on, you see where 334 is? The, uh, southwest corner of that is, was the lowest point of the property. Uh, or in the middle, in the middle somewhere of their property line. And the grade across his property line and mine is one over three as regulated. And so the, the, it's back, you know, 12 feet or more, and then the fence is back even further from that.
So you filled your property up three feet without retaining walls and did a one-on-three grading plan back? Was that inspected by anyone?
I spoke with inspector and, uh, the investigator at the time and I spoke with, um. Uh, who's it talking about? John Weiss has been, I've been, John Weiss has been advising me on the project. And he said, you really just need to have a one over three grade across that property line.
But did anyone at, at the town verify? Do you have a survey that shows that this is a one-on-three grade? Uh, because anything over that, you're now, uh. Going to hurt your neighbors and you're going to dump water and or dirt onto their property.
Yeah, they also planted grass there. So, I mean, they, we had multiple rains so far. Um, I can get a survey with the topography on that. I'm not, you know, finished with the project yet. My plan was to do it when the project is all done. Uh, and I would even say the minimum grade is one over three. There's also a fence line dispute, uh, the property of 336 has their fence on my property about four feet. So when that dispute is settled, um, you know, we'll remeasure and maybe even add some dirt to extend it a little bit if needed.
Okay. I apologize for the dog.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board?
To chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good evening. Um, I think one of the people said that it's, uh, backs up to the wetlands.
Untrue. There's no wetlands in the area.
There are no. There are no wetlands.
I checked all the maps, all the flood zones, everything. Uh, I think it's a, a swell, um, what do you call it? It's a stage four on the swell line or something like that. Uh, in the, in the, on the, on the neighboring properties. But it is not in a flood zone in any way.
No, I didn't say flood zone. I said wetlands.
Oh, it is not wetlands in any way either.
There's no wetlands right up coach, on coach or anything?
Not that I saw on any of the maps.
Okay. Um, on old coach, I mean, one of the neighbors did mention wetlands.
Yeah. Am I still connected or?
Because if you put dirt down in the wetlands, it's.
Oh, come on.
I, who said that?
There's no, there's no.
I did, Ronnie.
This is, so one, one, there's, this, this is not wetlands. The property is not wetlands at all. The closest wetlands is, is by Seaport Deli and the Stockton Harbor. Um, yeah.
I'm just saying, I, I gotta be, we gotta defer to everybody and somebody did mention wetlands. So that was my question. I'm asking you a question.
Yeah. So I checked every map possible. I even went back into, um, drainage plans and flood zone plans from like 2002, I think, or 2007. I did a whole big report on it. I read through it. And there's, there's no wetlands and not in the flood or runoff zone at all.
Okay. Right.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
One last question, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Doyle, did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah. Well, while, while we were discussing, I did go on the portal to check. Could we, we do have what the wetlands overlays? I don't see a wetland overlay for this area, so.
All right. Uh, I'm sorry. And was it Mr. Cunha?
And it was actually Mr. Bergson first and then.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bergson.
Okay. So Mr. McCann.
Yes.
Okay. Have you received any notice of violation from any governmental agency with respect to your project?
Nope. I'm actually working with the federal government on this project.
Okay. And you consulted with the D E C with respect to this project?
Yes, they've been on site and walked through.
Okay. Have your neighbors, the two gentlemen who, who raised, by the way, legitimate concerns from a, uh, from a social and neighborhood, uh, concern. Okay. Have, have they addressed these concerns to you directly?
Uh, not all the ones they listed. Uh, mostly they were concerned about the grading and runoff, which I did a hundred percent to code.
Okay. Now you are here, as I understand it, for a two-foot, two-foot, 2.3 foot variance with respect to the height of this barn, which other than the 2.3 feet, you could build as of right.
Yes. And I, I thought about it, but no, I wanted to make everything look nice.
Okay. All right. Um, there's nothing here in this application about wetlands. Is that correct? No, no part of your application pertains to wetlands, does it?
There's not, there's nothing of wetlands here. Yeah.
Are you asking for any variance with respect to grading here?
No.
Are you asking for any setback variance with respect to the structures on the property? Specifically the, uh, the containers?
Yes, no, not.
Are you asking for a variance with respect to approval to put the, put the containers on the property?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Mr. McGinn, you seem like a reasonable gentleman. Are you willing to, uh, discuss the visual concerns and the, possibly the sound concerns with your neighbors?
Yes, and I have tried it before.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergson. Mr. Cunha.
Actually, Mr. Bergson touched on it. I wanted to know if he had reached out to the D E C because I didn't know who mentioned it or didn't mention it. And I was just curious, again, like Mr. Bergson said, uh, did anybody come out and issue any violations for the grading?
Very good. All right. Um, it is September 9th. What holdover dates do we have? October 7?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, what's the purpose of holding this over?
I, I hear that Mr. McGinn is willing to listen to the concerns of his neighbors. Um, and I think, uh, he offered to provide us with, um, a revised survey showing us that the grading was in fact done correctly.
Project's all done. Uh, I was planning on doing that.
And I, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to have that, have those conversations. Mr. Bergson, is it your preference to?
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to know what the purpose of it was.
Yeah, it seems to me that it's probably the major, um, one, one of the major concerns of at least myself as a board member and the two neighbors that live immediately there. And I heard some willingness from the applicant to do so. Um, Mr. McGinn, I took that as an, you know, an honest and forthright statement.
Yeah, and I had.
I don't want to waste your time or, or the neighbor's time. And if you intend to have those conversations and the neighbors do, I'd like to see that occur. And I'd like to give you the opportunity to do that. And that's why my suggestion is, um, that we move to, um, hold the matter over until October 7th, which should give you enough time to accomplish that.
Too far, just, just speaking with the neighbors?
Well, I, I would hope that, that you'd come to some sort of resolution, um, concerning the, the, the issues that the neighbors brought up that Mr. Bergson clarified.
It's, I mean, I can talk to them and hear the concerns. It's mostly exactly what I heard today. I would like to try to settle this today. If not, I'll just build a, a lower pitched shed, but then.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay.
I don't think that I'll be able to change anything or do I really want to change anything after hearing the concerns extensively on this call?
I said, you listened, you heard the concerns, but, um, when you said you were willing to listen to them, you don't have any intention of doing anything to either.
I had plans to put tall varieties up along the fence line. That's the only thing that would help settle their unease.
Yeah. All right. Well, maybe, maybe that needs to be, uh, maybe time needs to simplify things a little bit. I don't know. But my motion is to adjourn us to October 7th. I just need a second on it.
Second.
Second is by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
And, and I need the roll call for all in favor because I'm sensing some objection here. So, um, I've made the motion, Mr. Lindsay has seconded it. Uh, Mr. Cunha, how are you voting?
Aye.
Mr. Uh, Bergson, how are you voting?
Aye.
And my, uh, Mr. Les Mazarella?
Aye.
All right. I, I have more than four. I'm not going to go through the line. So we return to October 7th. Gentlemen, I'd recommend that you speak with each other. Thank you very much.
Man, clarify. All I need to do is have a conversation with them and then come back.
Mr. McGinn, you, you do what you think is right and we'll see you back on the 7th. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one more.
Case number 28, Paul Severs, care of Tracy's permits, 80 Terry Street, Patchogue. Properties located on the southeast corner, Georgia Pine Place and Sip Avenue, Medford. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing above-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Tracy Rivera for the applicant. Ms. Rivera, there you are. We can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Um, good evening. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney.
All this swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. Trace Rivera, agent for the applicant, offices located 80 Terry Street, Patchogue, New York. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here representing Mr. and Mrs. Severs. Properties located 1033 Sip Avenue, Medford. We are here today to legalize an existing above-ground pool that is holding an 11.6 foot rear sex, uh, setback, um, where we need 15. It's the only relief we're requesting before the board. Um, as we all know, many applications come before the board for pools, for proposed pools, existing pools. Um, greater variances have been approved by the board before. Mr. and Mrs. Severs have some, um, open permits on their property. And while, um, looking to obtain the C O, um, they found out this pool was an issue. The pool was put in after COVID started. They were informed by a pool company that they didn't need a, um, a pool permit for an above-ground pool. Uh, you know, they didn't realize that they had to have a permit for it. And here we are before you looking for the relief for this rear yard setback. They've paid a penalty, uh, with everything a little under a thousand dollars. And, um, it's conforming to the area. It doesn't impose a negative impact and hoping that you look favorable upon the application. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Wisdom.
I think it's Mazarella.
Our last one was.
Sorry, sorry, James. Mr. Wisdom.
I'm starting to have my feelings hurt here.
No, Mr.
He doesn't know his mic is off.
I'm asking him to. James, your, your, your mic is, um.
I have a few questions.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lindsay. Jim, Jimmy, we can't take you because your mic is off. You're not unmuting yourself.
Okay.
We have to ask, we have to.
Good. How are you, Ronnie?
I have too many, too many people talking at once. Mr. Wisdom has come off and now he's with us. So, Ms. Lindsay, I'm just going to ask you to, just to wait for a moment. James, you, we have a, we have a rear yard request for a pool, 11.6 or 15 is required.
So is, is that a new pool, Trace, or is this a, it is a new pool?
It was a pool that was put in after COVID. They have children. Everyone, as we know, has been staying home. They have, you know, they didn't know, they thought they only had to get a permit for an in-ground pool. A lot of companies are still going with the old rule that you don't need permits for above grounds, but they forget that you have to keep the zoning. So, uh, they kind, yep, they kind of fell victim to this and they got stuck paying, you know, a couple thousand dollars by the time they're done legalizing something.
Right. Above the, uh, cost of the pool.
Exactly.
So, so it's holding 11.6 off the side yard, correct?
At the rear yard.
Oh, is it the rear yard?
Yes, that's rear yard. Yes. And I also submitted a picture that shows you that you can't even see this pool.
Okay. Um, are there other pools in the neighborhood that looks, there we go.
Yeah. These are the pools in all neighborhoods, all neighborhoods, as you know.
I do see there's a couple in the backyards, right? You know, to the like, um, not, just to the south of it, I think it is, right? There's a couple of houses, only pools in the backyards. I could see that. So it conforms to the neighborhood. It's not out of character in the neighborhood at all.
No, not at all. You see many applications like this every evening when you have.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Mr. Lindsay, did you want anything further at this point?
I just want to wish everybody a good night.
Don't be, don't be leaving us yet. If there's nothing further, does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant the application type two.
Dang it.
Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the 2:00 PM interval calendar. I believe that we have two cases on the holdover calendar, one of which is a, um, previously heard. So I'd like to move directly to there if everyone is okay with that.
Show move.
Case number 26 of July 15th, 2020, Elizabeth Cosgrove Chandler and David Chandler, care of Michelle Quitrally, 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue. Properties located on the southwest corner, Ridge Avenue and South 13th Street, Point of Woods, Fire Island National Seashore. Applicant requests rear yard variances for proposed deck with shower, proposed one-story residence addition with roof deck, front yard setback variance from Ridge Avenue for existing bike rack.
And do we have Ms. Quitrally with us?
Yes, I'm here. Hear me.
Very good. Good evening. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney so that you can be sworn.
This all is swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. Michelle Quitrally, agent for the applicant, 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, New York, 11772. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're here representing Elizabeth Cosgrove Chandler, who is the leaseholder of the subject property located in the Point of Woods community. We're before you requesting a rear yard variance for a proposed addition that would have a 19.6 foot rear yard, um, a proposed deck with a shower that would hold a 15.6 foot rear yard, uh, where 20 feet is required by all. Uh, we are also requesting to maintain a 13-foot front yard setback for an existing bike platform where 20 feet is required by the code. We believe our area variances are minimal to grant, will not have an adverse impact to the neighbors or the community, as there are no neighbors on the west side of the property and the north side is heavily vegetated. Uh, we also have received a no objection letter from Fire Island National Seashore and an approval letter from the Point of Woods Board of Architectural Advisory Building and Grounds Committee, which, as you're aware, has the neighbors' blessings before they, uh, they approve the project. Uh, we believe that the setbacks are conforming to the nature and character of the community and they have been granted numerous times by this board. So if the board has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Quitrally. Was this, uh, is this a raised house?
All houses are raised at the beach.
All right. So then in the, the additions to the rear of the dwelling, how did you change the setback, the rear setback?
It doesn't, it doesn't change it. Um, if you look at the pictures, this is a gorgeous house. It should be up in New England. That's what Point of Woods is all about. And, uh, this is going to be a first story deck. Just needs a little bit more decking to this property. I don't know if you guys can see some of the pictures right here.
Yes.
Okay. Um, there'll be no, no impact whatsoever.
All right. The board has received a no objection letters from Fins and the, uh, the, the statement of support from the Point of Woods Association. We've made those part of the record. Does the board have anything further on the application? Uh, is this application subject to nothing? All right then. Uh, is there, if there's nothing further from the board, I'll take a motion.
Yes, sure. I'd like to grant the application type two is presented.
Second. Second.
Uh, motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quitrally. Uh, we, you, you're not presenting the next case. I, I see there's an attorney on, Mr. Nugent, uh, or are you involved in the next case?
Um, Larry Davis will be presenting the case.
Who? All right. There's someone.
O'Shaughnessy. Well, case number 43 of July 15th, 2020, Patrick O'Shaughnessy, care of Michelle Quitrally, properties located on the north side of Spruce Drive, 95 feet west of Evergreen Lane, Patchogue. Applicant requests renewal of special permit for pre-existing floating home.
All right. So then there is an attorney, Glenn Nugent, um, as, that is here to participate. But my guess is, um, since Mr. Davis, um, is representing that that individual is speaking on behalf of, uh, one of the neighbors. So, Mr. Davis will take your appearance again for the record and, uh.
Mr. Chair, I recuse.
The record should reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Larry Davis, 175 Oak Street, Patchogue, New York, for the applicant. Um, Mr. Chairman, when we left off, I believe that, uh, there were inspections that were to be performed. And I understand we have some reports in connection with those inspections.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. The first inspection, uh, is from Anthony Bremner from the building department. On July 24th, um, the building inspector inspected the premises at the request of the Board of Appeals. President of the inspection was the owner's agent, Michelle Quitrally. The scope of the inspection included the floating home and the premises to which it was docked. The inspector inspected the home and observed that it was arranged as a single-family dwelling. No obvious property maintenance violations were observed during the inspection of the floating home. Then the undersigned inspector inspected the premises to, to which the home was docked. Uh, he observed two boats and a jet ski docked along the premises bulkhead. The inspector inspected the interior of the boats at the request of Michelle Quitrally to verify that they were not being used as dwellings. The undersigned building inspector did not observe any signs of the vessel being used as residences. Uh, the inspector inspected the rest of the premises and observed small bundles of siding material that Michelle Quitrally stated in some substance were to be installed on the floating home. Also observed a lawn furniture, a barbecue, and a fence providing privacy for the yard area. There is an open permit, 19B 130742, for some of the subject fence. Construction of this fence has not been completed and the adjoining grade is not at its finished height at this time. Some additional sections were installed and require building permits. Also, a deck and a set of stairs were built and require permits. Uh, also have a, a report from Christopher Reed, the Board of Appeals planner. Um, the home was purchased by the applicant in 1994 and previously was located adjacent to 60 Colonial Drive, having been moored at this location since it was built in 19, apparently, uh, in 1984. Um, since granting permission for the relocation of the home in 2013, the Board of Appeals granted two renewals for the special permit. The first was in 2016. It was granted for a period of three years. In 2019, a renewal was granted for one year. When the house was relocated in 2013, a new special permit was required, which was subject to all violations identified in. in 2013, a new special permit was required, which was subject to all violations identified in report from Craig Lucas, dated September 16, 2013, either being removed or moved to conform. Two large box trailers in the required front yard, a small shed in the front yard, decking and walkways in the front yard and stockade fencing. The current inspection revealed no accessory structures. In fact, the property was devoid of any improvements in vegetation. Staff observed fill on the property apparently placed to raise the grade in order to accommodate a future home to meet FEMA requirements. Only a small section of six-foot-high fencing was observed in the front yard, wherein the majority of the six-foot stockade fence previously permitted by the board in 2019 was removed. There was no evidence of any stockpiling of building or construction materials. Exterior lighting was observed on the home, wherein the fixtures were observed being angled downward. Although the fixtures were unshielded, if the fixtures are rated at 1,800 lumens, they are not required to do so. In summary, staff did not observe any violations at the premises. That is the reports that we have.
All right, then, Mr. Davis, those are the reports that we've, that we have. Did you have any final comments?
Pretty much no. I think they speak for themselves. I believe that any assertions or problems neighbor have, have been resolved and there are, you know, there are no building materials there. I know that the open permit for the fence, they are still working on that fence and will make sure that it is up to code and we would ask for a three-year extension on the special permit here, Mr. Jim.
Is there anything further from the board on the application? All right, I'm going to ask the board for a motion to close and hold, please.
Oh.
Motion and second have been made. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Is there a motion for a brief recess?
Mr. Chairman, we still have the speaker.
Oh, boy. I forgot about that. I apologize. Let me first move to reopen. Motion, second have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the reopened application. Please bring up Mr. Nugent. There we go. Mr. Nugent, I apologize. After a couple of hours, I forget exactly what we're doing. I can see you. Can you hear us? All right. I'm not hearing you. Are you, have you unmuted yourself? I heard something. Still, still no audio. There is some change there. So now you're showing us as muted. So why don't you, can you just try to unmute one more time? Can you say something now? No, I'm still not hearing you. All right. Is there a way that we can have Mr. Nugent call?
Does Mr. Nugent have a pair of headphones?
Mr. Nugent, do you have headphones? That looks like a no. Okay. Are you, are you typing, are you chatting with him?
He must turn on his internal mic on his microphone on that computer. So there might be a feature. Because he is unmuted.
He is unmuted.
Yeah, he is unmuted. So that's something on his side.
All right, well, and let's not take a while to fix it. Can we, can we just have him call one of us? I, I'll have him call my cell phone. I'll put it on my, on speaker. Is there another way? I mean, we've done it by another method. I just don't know how it was done in the past.
I do not know Mr. Nugent's phone number and I do not want him to put it on the screen for everybody to see. So if he can somehow, I don't know how he can call.
Well, Mr. Nugent, can you, can you hear us? All right. So there's a chat feature on this. If you want to type your phone number into the chat feature, I'd be happy to call you with my cell phone.
We can send him a phone number to call. But we need, we kind, we need his phone number.
Phone number's right on the screen.
His phone number is right on the screen. Okay, I'm calling you.
Only we can see that.
Yeah. Well, what else can I do? I want to move us along here. It's not my preference. All right, Mr. Nugent, so I can hear you. All right, my only question is, can anyone else hear Mr. Nugent except for me?
No, I cannot.
No one can hear us.
Mr. Chair, I'm receiving a phone number he can call with a meeting.
All right. Just bear with me a second.
And I can send it through, through chat.
So you can hear that, Mr. Nugent? All right. I have, so that, so that Mr. Vega is going to send you a phone number directly and just dial it when you, when you get it. He'll give you further direction.
Mr. Nugent, did you receive all three of those? The phone number is the first one, the webinar ID, and then the password. So, Mr. Nugent, I think you can hear me. So you're gonna, you're gonna put in the phone number that begins with the 703. It's going to ask you to punch in a webinar ID with the, and then it's going to ask you for the password. Once all that stuff is put in, I can see that you're up here and then I can bring you in. Mr. Nugent, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you the number again, if you have a pen. So the phone number is 301-715-8592. Then the webinar ID, which is going to ask you next, is 820-6256-6415. And the password is 566191.
Larry, Larry, I will give you the option of, sorry, no video. I will give you the option if you want just to hold over to the next hearing. It's not going to affect anything. The boat's there. I think you're unmuted now because I'm not hearing.
I would, I would prefer not to.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just wanted to give you the option either way.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I wish we knew what stage Mr. Nugent was on.
I don't know if he's using his office phone or if he's using his cellphone.
And they, are you having any communication with him back and forth on any of the?
I'm not having any communication with him. I'm having communication with upstairs.
Okay, all right. But so we don't know where, where he is with regard to the direction he's been given.
I have given him all the information he needs. There we go. No. It's not him.
Okay, Chairman, I have Mr. Nugent on, on the phone right now?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not getting any volume on that. I mean, if he, if he wants to use, I can call him on his cellphone and walk him through the process on his office phone that's right behind him. I'm going to try that. I say whatever, go with whatever will work the quickest.
Okay. Seems like he's using his office phone.
Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me?
Mr. Person.
While we're waiting, I was just wondering, do we have to move to reopen to allow them to participate?
It did.
Close? Oh, you did. We did move through. Okay, I'm sorry.
I just expected it to happen quicker.
No, no, I understand. I understand. That wasn't my point. I just didn't.
It was so long ago. I'm surprised I remembered that I reopened.
Mr. Chair, Public Information Department's on the phone with him trying.
Very good. I wish there was something for else, else for us to do. I'm going to ask the board if we could just, are you, do I have more than a quorum with us? Yes. I'm going to ask, hopefully you can all hear me. I'm going to ask if you could just turn to page, page 18 of today's agenda. Cases 3 to 6A of July 11, 2018, the name of landmark properties of Suffolk LTD. Going to move to. I turned the matter to October twenty first for, I'm sorry, this recording. Setting it. Okay. Motion is to reopen. That matter for October twenty first, two thousand and twenty for the purpose. Of the board. Conducting a hearing for the reconsideration to reconsider revocation of variances previously granted the applicant. I just need a second on that motion.
Second.
Motion and second have been made all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. There's nothing left on our agenda that we can do. Until we hear from Mr. Nugent. I'm, you know, actually.
I'm now back to recusal, Mr. Chair.
On which, on which application?
Or did Rick recuse on this?
On Mr. Davis.
You want to see? Okay.
Oh, Mr. Davis is, oh, yes.
Yeah, I'm still here.
We're back to recusal. Let's write Mr. Kunam slow. You, 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 you unrecused and then now we're accused because we're back to this application. O'Shaughnessy.
We're back to our only case. Yes.
The only one. This has never happened where we, this happens at the end of the calendar, usually in the middle, and then we just come back.
Understood.
He's on the phone with them now.
Here we go. I got him.
All right. Nice work to all of you that accomplished them.
Thank you.
Miss Lindsay, you did nothing.
Should be able to, Mr. Nugent, can you hear us? We still can't hear you, Mr. Nugent. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Oh. Weaver.
He's fine.
All right. So you hit the mute button. All right, Mr. Nugent. So can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, very good. So just your appearance for the record, please.
Rosemary Perry, Glen Nugent, thirty one Marine Avenue, Amityville, New York.
Yeah, that's not going to work.
Just he can, we can stop his video. Okay, we know he's there, so. Can you hear us, Mr. Nugent?
Yes.
Okay, so just use the telephone feature and you can sign off. I can sign you off for a whole lot.
Yes, I'm off the hearing and then.
Okay.
Mr. Nugent, you can hear us?
Yes.
Okay, everybody can hear him clearly?
Yes, that's much better. All right. So, Mr. Nugent, just your, your appearance for the record again, please.
For Rosemary Perry, Glen Nugent, thirty one Green Avenue, Amityville, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. And you, good evening. You've, you've managed to get on here. So now, please let us know what you want the board to hear concerning the application.
I appreciate the time and I appear for Rosemary Perry resides across the creek from the subject premises. She resides at fifteen Harborside Court East Patchogue. I know the record is complete as the previous approval meeting minutes were adopted into this. And I just want to reiterate, and I apologies for you if you think it's unnecessary to do so. This, this property is residential area is being used as commercial property. The previous gentleman had indicated that the history of the approvals, it having been relocated from sixty Colonial Drive. That prior address from where it resided for, for its, where it was moored for many years was, is Marine District. This is a residential district. And the use is not incidental to the primary use of the property. Primary use of the property, obviously, it's a vacant lot. May have been cleaned up in the, in subsequent since the original hearing, but still in all, it's a, it's a residential lot. And this is a business purpose. The applicant is cited as, as Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Apparently, title to the property has changed since the approval. It's now in the, in the name of Cool Change Inc. I understand now that there's a building permit application existing for the development of the lot. It's, but it's not developed. It's, it's a single family lot. There's been no other than a per, permit taken, been taken out. There's no, the sign of any development of the lot. And again, it's a business purpose only, which is not incidental to its primary use. So for those reasons, we object to the use of the lot. And again, to reiterate, we believe it, it looks unsightly and decreases the market value of the surrounding properties, including that of my client. So thank you for listening to me.
All right. Then thank you, Mr. Nugent. Mr. Davis, did you have responsive comments?
No, I believe that was just a reiteration of the first hearing that we had. And, you know, it was a lot of time wasted for to hear the same thing and no new comments. So I'm a little, a little put off by that. But other than that, I believe that the application is a clean application and should be renewed based on the inspection reports by both Mr. Reed and Mr. Bremer from the Building Department. And he, and I know that they are in the process of getting a building permit for a primary structure there. So we would ask that the board continue to allow the use as it exists.
All right, thank you. I'm going to make the same motion then. A motion is to close and hold. Is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie's motion for brief recess, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we going to executive now?
Yeah, the motion was for recess. Is there a second on it?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want us to go directly to the executive session? Link?
Please.
I guess he just left. Okay, bye.
Are we going to the executive?
Ronnie, you're going to the executive session. Yes.
Hey, Michelle, I'm back. All right. Who are we missing? Oh, Matt. Yeah, Matt's Matt's email. It's probably forty ago for you. I have two, three, four. So you don't have to keep sharing the screen anymore. Is it Cunha? Thank you. There he is. And Laurie's here. Okay. Board members, there is motion to resume the hearing. Motion second ever made all in favor. In the opposed motion carries turning today's worksheet. Page number two, case number four, in the name of Grace Poffenbarger. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to grant as with standard residential mitigation measures type two action.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, second by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries to page fourteen. Case number is a holdover. It's case number forty-three of July fifteen, two thousand twenty, in the name of Patrick Alshana C. Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I moved to grant the application for a special permit for one year.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen. Second, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Recuse.
Record should reflect that Mr. Cunha has abstained. Mr. Lazar and Mr. Mazarella have abstained. Motion carries for in favor to extensions, one refusal. Turning to page nineteen. Thank you. Under request for grant extension, case forty-four of August twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, the name of Winton Ingram. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Prior grant of eight twenty-two, two thousand eighteen is extended for a period of six months to expire to twenty-two, twenty twenty-one.
That motion is by Mr. Lazaru. Second, taken by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries under extension of time to file covenants, case thirty-six of August seven, two thousand nineteen, the name of Justin Van Fleet. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The time to file the covenants is extended for a period of three months from date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Lazar. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Opposed motion carries to page forty-one. Cases forty-seven through forty-eight of July fifteen, two thousand twenty, in the name of Robert Frydell. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Unlisted negative declaration granted as presented. Subject to highway work permit for required improvements to Strong's Lane. Subject to across access and maintenance agreement for existing driveway to be shared by both parts. An alternative location for parcel access is prohibited due to significant oak trees within the Panhandle of Lot B.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries on the bottom of the same page, case twenty of January twenty-two, two thousand twenty, also in the name of Robert Frydell. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, motion to dismiss.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page twenty-two, case eleven of June three, two thousand twenty, in the name of Michael and Sally McCrally, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Type two action. Granted as revised survey dated July ninth, two thousand twenty. Height variance for PB for four-foot PVC fence located within thirty feet of radius of intersection denied. Application is directed to reduce the height of existing fence in the intersection radius to the permitted two and a half feet or removal or remove same.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain.
Right? Wrong one.
All right. So the record should reflect that Mr. Lazaru has abstained. Mr. Mazarella has abstained. Motion carries. I'm going to take a five in favor with two extensions. And we'll move now to the bottom of the page. Case, case seven of April twenty, April twenty-two, two thousand twenty, in the name of Thomas Neathart. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Type two action granted as presented. No backlighting. Illumination shall be via gooseneck or ground lights. The latter of the, the latter of which shall be pointed away from public roadway and shall not exceed forty watts. Application to file a final CO, CFO for detached garage. Permit number eighteen. Be as in boy one, one, five, four, seven, seven. Within sixty days of filing of this decision with the Office of Town Clerk.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Burksen is opposed, Mr. Lazar abstains, Mr. Mazarella abstains, motion carries four in favor. With one opposed and two abstaining. Turning to page twenty-three, case twenty-four of February nineteen, two thousand twenty. In the name of Francis Petronani, the third, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Again, Mr. Lindsay.
Granted type two. Granted in part. Remain to deny pursuant to findings of facts and conclusion.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay. Second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed? The record should reflect that Mr. Cunha is abstained, Mr. Mazarella has abstained. Motion carries five in favor with two extensions. Finally, board members to page twenty-four. Case eleven of November twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen, the name of Gabrielli Horse Block Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, is a type two action granted as amended. As per revised site plan of H two M Architects last updated two, five, nineteen, to eliminate relief for outdoor storage screening on the north side of the parcel. And to add forty land bank parks, parking spaces. Arterial buffers shall be a minimum of fifty feet. All and all storage and display to be located a minimum of fifty feet from the southern property line. Fuel site to be utilized solely for vehicles owned and leased by the applicant.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by. I'll take it by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. I understand that Mr. Lazaru, Mr. Mazarella both abstained, motion carries five in favor with two extensions. Finally, board members, case number twelve, also in the name of Gabrielli Horse Block Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, is a type two action granted as amendment amended to eliminate requests for relief. For ground sign on northern side, northern side of parcel. Detached ground sign on south side of parcel to be a maximum thirty feet in height. And a hundred and thirty-five square feet in area.
Motion by Mr. Cunha. Seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed? Should reflect that Mr. Lazarus abstained, Mr. Mazarella abstained, motion carries five in favor with two extensions. With that said, at seven fifteen PM, does the board have a motion to adjourn? Motion and second have been made all in favor. Motion.
Can I, Mr. Chairman?